Planning Commission hearing for April 23rd, 2022, excuse me, 2013 is called to order. At least I got the right month this time. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll...
Yeah, no, there are...
For an item not on the agenda?
Yes. I'm sorry, I turned the card into that room.
Oh, I had you for the school district, for all the three items.
Christine Kazinsky, Incorporated, Clackamas County. I would like to address a comment made by Commissioner Guile a few weeks ago, which was that people of Holly Lane are not against growth or development, but rather are seeking smart development. Holly Lane sits in a unique position. Yes, it is the only north-south connector between Beaver Creek and Redland Roads. However, the city has brought more and more development up to the county boundaries. Safety and livability have been sacrificed when there is no need for this to happen if development is appropriately planned. We have seen a 16-year-old cling to life in an auto accident. We are first responders and the victims of hundreds of accidents occurring at the ditches and at the curve. Most of our pets have been killed. We wonder whether one of us will be next. We took an active role in the Park Place Concept Plan. We met with the developer on a few occasions to speak about solutions, knowing that heavy density here is an unsafe undertaking. The best geologists in the area came out to help Holly Lane. They pointed out areas that were good to build in and those that were not. The developer came to the city stating he could build beautiful upscale homes on two-to-five acre parcels, adding more property value to the tax rolls. It is easier to site homes on large lots for stability in landslide zones, and less homes would reduce incidents of travel. The requests for less density were denied, stating that the city had to meet metro-density requirements. So Holly Lane was left with a concept plan to the north and yet another to the south, with both plans and a commercial center adding more than 50,000 ADTs per day to the transportation system, with many motorists choosing to use Holly. All the people of Holly Lane sought was safety and livability for their children and their families. But what we got was more and more volumes of traffic, some of which travel Holly at more than 91 miles per hour. Is it any wonder that we ask for smart development? Because as you can see, we've tried. We worked hard to achieve this in the concept plan process. However, in the end, the concerns for our people were turned away. Please do not label us as being against development, because we are not. We have done everything to bring our concerns to this city. We only hope that within time, that we will be recognized and the safety for our lives and our neighborhood will finally be upheld by Oregon City, and that smart development addressing safety and landslides will be undertaken. What I really came to talk about to you tonight, about citizen comments. I really want to tell you that I give each of you a big thank you for the wonderful work you are doing. Your commission has been a breath of fresh air from some of those in the past. You are attentive to each detail. You do your research and you are informed. But most of all, you listen. You are open to the many concerns and comments brought before you, and you seek solutions. Your commission is doing a great job. You deserve much appreciation for all you do. And most of all, thank you for being gracious.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I hope you're still saying that after...
Not for the next testimony.
Are there any other public comments before we go to the next item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to the first scheduled item, PC 13...
We need to hear the rules on that thing.
I know, I know. 13-033, CU 12-01, SP 12-19, VR 12-05, Conditional Use Site Plan and Design Review Variance Application for New Modular Eight Classroom Building at Gardner Middle School. And I will read the procedures regarding this hearing. A staff report has been prepared for each application that has been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be given to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to the staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make the request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission, or LUBA, or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We will now open the record for the files which I've listed. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? Has any commissioner visited the site? And for the record, commissioners who have visited the site should declare that.
Not I.
Not I. I am on the board of directors of an organization that has property directly adjacent to the school district property, and I received the notice of the hearing. So I'm just declaring that.
I should probably recuse myself since I'm employed by the school district. So, and they are my primary source of income. So, I will... You want me to step down or just slide back and not be party to this?
You probably need to move off away from the...
I can do that.
Sitting in the back would be nice.
Or I can go.
No, don't go far. Don't go far.
Or out behind the sun would be fun, too.
We're going to call the enforcement people to keep you in.
Last year, I had a son attend Gardner Middle School, and my wife also works for the school district, so I may need to recuse myself as well.
I think you have a member of the family that has direct pecuniary interest. I don't think your son's attendance in the school creates a conflict, but I think your wife's income does.
Is that fiduciary?
Yep.
Is it fiduciary?
Yeah, does he have a fiduciary interest?
No.
Because his wife works for the school district.
No, he has a direct financial interest in the outcome potentially.
I don't think we have a quorum.
Do you guys have a quorum?
Not with three.
Hello, Bob.
Bob?
Mr. Mahoney.
I'm going back to grade school.
I got an F in English composition. I'm still working on that better.
But not from Gardner? Was it from Gardner?
No, it was high school, I'm sorry.
Okay, there you go. One, two, three, four.
I have no conflict of interest that I'm aware of.
Is our quorum four or five? It was five. Four?
Just a sigh. Just made it. And now we will have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Kidwell, and good evening, commissioners. My name is Peter Walter. I'm associate planner that reviewed this application. The application is requesting conditional use permit, approval to allow the placement of a modular building containing eight classrooms and restroom facilities on the Gardner Middle School campus, and it also requests site plan and design review and variance approvals for the project. Gardner Middle School is located at 180 Ethel Street in Oregon City, and the school presently has an enrollment of 586 7th and 8th graders, but is being expanded in order to also serve 6th grade students. At the present time, 6th grade students attend a school located at the former Mount Pleasant Elementary School campus on Lynn Avenue. And the projected number of 6th grade students that will be enrolled at Gardner Middle School in the fall of 2013 is 234. These students will be placed in eight classrooms in the new modular building, and eight teachers will be added to the staff at the Gardner campus. Little history on prior land use approvals, and there is also some corrections I need to make on page two of the staff report. The original school was built in 1954, and there have been numerous upgrades to the building over the years. There have been no additions to the building. A fire destroyed the east wing, not the west wing, the east wing in 1989, and subsequently, the east wing was rebuilt along with other renovations. And the building received a remodel in 2004 and 2005. The most recent new structure is the covered play area, which covered the existing outdoor play area, which was reviewed as a minor site plan in 2005. And prior to that, the eastern classroom wing shown in the photo on page three was constructed following the aforementioned fire, and that was site plan SP 90-23. So the original building was constructed prior to the requirement for conditional use approval for schools in residential zones. And under our code, expansions to pre-existing uses subsequently designated as conditional uses are permitted through a conditional use process. So we're reviewing this new building as a conditional use, and we've reviewed it against the conditional use criteria. And with that, I'll go into my PowerPoint presentation. This is an aerial photograph of the subject's site with a red arrow showing where the proposed building is located. The site is just to the east of Ethel Street and Hood Street, which stub into the site right at the edge of the property. Lynn Avenue is approximately, let's see, I think about 600 feet to the west, and it's north of Warner Milne Road. There are three existing pedestrian accessways into the property from the residential subdivisions on the north and the east sides. And there's an informal dirt trail that goes into the south part of the property from Warner Milne Road, just on the west side of the PGE facility, which you can see there on the bottom center of the screen. And I already stated the enrollment and what the proposed building would be used for. It'd be eight classrooms, eight teachers. Here's an overall site plan of the site. So where the building would be placed is approximately 20 feet from the existing east wing, about 30 feet from the entrance from the south wing. Building itself has a footprint of about 128 feet by 68 feet. As you can see on this footprint, it's located just within the perimeter of the ring road that loops around the property. So a new sidewalk system is proposed to connect the buildings, and the driveway that is shown on the site plans will be relocated to avoid the existing sewer and water line easements on the property. There are new landscape areas proposed on three sides of the new building, and the existing driveway would be relocated approximately 15 to 30 feet east of its current location. These two photos show the site location. The applicant has proposed to remove the line of existing trees on the site to accommodate the placement of the modular classrooms and mitigate for the tree removal pursuant to Oregon City Code Section 1741. Building floor plan is shown here, along with a breezeway detail for a canopy that would connect between the existing building and the new modular building. As you see from the layout, the bathrooms, for the boys' bathroom and the girls' bathroom are in the middle of the building, and there's a corridor that bisects the building from one end to the other, with entrances on either end. Landscaping plan includes additional trees to mitigate for the removed trees on the property, and also additional tree and shrub plantings throughout the area on the north end and south end of the buildings, which are shown here. Approximately 24 trees would be placed in landscaping, 18 of which are mitigation trees for the trees that are removed.
And how big are those?
They vary between 13 to 18 inches, I believe. It's covered in my staff report under Section 1741.
And the ones that are being taken out?
Yeah, those are the diameters of the trees that are existing that would be removed. And based on our code, there's a table in our code that allows for removal and replacement as a clear and objective standard based on the location of a proposed building footprint. This is a side view or building elevation of the proposed modular. And you can see that each classroom has a set of two windows in it. The bathroom has a window in it, and so that's the side view that would face the field, the main view that people would see. And then on the ends of the building, you've got the two entrances with windows in there. This is a color scheme view and material view. The applicant is proposing an architectural composition, roofing tiles, hardy plank siding, and hardy plank panels underneath the windows, and colors in accordance with the existing building on a concrete foundation. The applicable code criteria that we reviewed are stormwater management in Chapter 13.12, dimensional requirements of the R6 Single Family Residential District, our tree protection standards, our administration and procedures section, which refers to the requirements for public noticing, off-street parking and loading variances, site plan and design review, and conditional uses. I'm going to refer to the conditional use criteria first and the variance criteria next, and the remaining criteria are outlined in my staff report, but these are the ones that I'm going to concentrate on. Conditional use criteria are listed in 1756 of the city code under A and B, that the use be listed as conditional use in the underlying zone district, which it is, that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering their size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements and natural features, which is met, that the site and proposed development are timely considering the adequacy of transportation systems, public facilities, and services existing or planned for the area affected by the use. The application includes a transportation impact study that was submitted by the applicant and reviewed by our city transportation consultant, Raplinger and Associates. They also, as part of that study, did a parking study and a bicycle study to determine how those needs were met. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of the surrounding property for its primary use, which in this case is residential. And the proposal must satisfy the goals and policies of the city comprehensive plan which apply to the proposed use. And staff has found all those criteria to be met. Additionally, conditional use criteria include the following stipulations: That this planning commission may stipulate restrictions or conditions or any other reasonable condition, restriction, or safeguard that would uphold the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and mitigate adverse effects upon neighboring properties by reason of the use, extension, construction, or alteration allowed as set forth in the findings of the planning commission. Our staff report includes findings and recommended conditions of approval in accordance with this criterion. We've also reviewed the application for compliance with dimensional standards, the R6 zone, which are all met. And in the case of a use which existed prior to the effective date of the ordinance, in this case, the conditional use ordinance, any change of use or expansion of the lot area for the structure has to conform with the requirements for conditional use. So we've done, we've made findings for that. And we have not addressed this in the staff report because the applicant has not requested to exceed a specified maximum on the site. They're well below their lot coverages that are permitted for the R6 zone. The height limits and setbacks proposed by the applicant are all in accordance with the R6 residential zone, and it is a good way from the property line to where this building footprint is. So, we don't see the need for the planning commission to specifically permit further expansion to a specified maximum at this point without the need for returning for additional review. So any future expansions would be also processed as conditional uses. Now I will address the variance requests that the applicant is asking for. The applicant is proposing a modular building which is constructed off-site to a pre-specified structural standard, and which needs to be moved to the site in order to accommodate the new students in the fall. And the modular building does not meet several of our site plan and design review architectural standards. So the applicant has requested variances to those. The first variance request is a variance to the maximum permitted five-foot setback from the street for an institutional building. And the applicant has responded to each of the variance criteria with respect to this standard and addressed them to our satisfaction. Essentially, the existing parking lot on the site and the existing circulation pattern on the site does not allow for the placement of the building any closer to the property line on Ethel or Hood Street. Basically, those are public right-of-ways that stub into the site and don't provide much street frontage to place a building there. And in addition to that, you've got parking and circulation in the front of the area. The placement of the building on, next to the existing east wing is necessary for a variety of reasons: to provide the shortest connection for the students to the new classroom, as well as to work within the confines of the existing constraints of the sewer and water easements on the site. The second variance request is for variation in building massing. New institutional buildings are typically required to show how the massing of the building is broken up when it gets to a certain size. In this case, the modular construction of the building does not allow for that. Similarly, the amount of wall articulation or wallplane articulation that is typically required on a new building is difficult for the applicant to provide on a modular construction building, and they've requested a variance to that. And the fourth architectural standard that they have requested a variance to is the transparency requirement. Our code requires that the buildings that face public streets and public areas provide a minimum of 60% windows or transparency on that side of the building, and other sides of the building, and the other two sides of the building are required to have at least 30% windows. In this case, the main building wall is about 128 feet long, and the applicant is proposing less than 60% of that is in windows. And the only transparency provided on the other sides of the buildings are the windows within the entrance doors. And they've adequately addressed the variance criteria for that, and which I'll go into. The final variance request is from a separate part of the code, and it's from the off-street loading and parking requirements, which includes the number of bicycle parking spaces. A new building of eight classrooms requires 32 parking spaces, and the applicant had proposed only 16 and requested a variance from the bicycle parking standard. The applicant's traffic engineer noted that some of the existing parking spaces were improperly used. Kids were locking their bikes to posts and other places that were not bike racks. And the observation of bicycle use was done during the winter months. And upon review of the traffic analysis, our traffic consultant felt that that was not adequate to support a variance, and that if anything, it made a case for providing at least 32 parking spaces considering it is a new building. So, staff is recommending that that particular variance request be denied. The variance criteria are stated here. The variance from the requirements is not likely to cause substantial damage to adjacent properties by reducing light, air, safe access, or other desirable or necessary qualities otherwise protected by this title. But the variance request is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship; that granting the variance will equal or exceed the purpose of the regulation to be modified; that any impacts resulting from the adjustment are mitigated; that no practical alternatives have been identified which would accomplish the same purpose and not require variance; and that the variance conforms to the comprehensive plan and the intent of the ordinance being varied. Staff is satisfied that the applicant has addressed the variance criteria for each of the variances and has stated our findings as such in the staff report. I'd be happy to go into those in further detail. But we are recommending that the planning commission approve planning files CU 12-01, SP 12-19, and VR 12-05 as submitted by the applicant with the attached recommended conditions of approval in Exhibit 1, with the exception of the request for a variance from Oregon City Municipal Code 1752-040B, number of bicycle parking spaces. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the staff report or the application.
Commissioners, any questions?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman. If the commission were to approve the application without the approval of the variance, would that in some sort of, in some way, be at odds with approving? With the variance is what I'm getting at.
If the variance is approved, the building is basically, can't be approved because the building is a preset design. If the variance is not approved, the building, yeah, the building cannot be approved as submitted, and the applicant would need to address any specific concerns you had about the building... the building design.
Building and design and the variance go hand in hand? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they do, yes. The, it's a module building, and it's constructed a certain way that has limitations on how it's constructed. The wallplanes are kind of, and it's put on a, put in sections on a truck and moved. And it's got limited in the height and the amount of articulation and construction, but the applicant...
So you're saying that with the placement of the building was proposed, that they lose a certain amount of bicycle parking? Is that...
Well, they will be required to provide the full amount of bicycle parking for the new building in front of the school in the location that they've proposed. We've got a condition of approval that requires that. If the application, if the planning commission agrees with staff that that particular variance request be denied, then they would just build the 32 parking spaces as a new rack in a proposed location.
So on that same question that you're asking, you were, did you say earlier that the students are already connecting their bikes to posts that are there because there's not enough currently? Did you hear you say that?
That was what was stated in the applicant's traffic impact analysis, yes.
And yet they're adding 256 more students and probably would need more bicycle parking corrected?
That's our, that's our position as staff, yes.
Especially sixth graders ride bikes a lot.
Right.
Okay, so you're saying in response to Bob that even if we vote to approve this tonight, it cannot move forward until that variance is corrected? Did I hear that?
Well, I think...
I'm sorry?
Well, part of, part of our approval, if we elected to approve, would be to...
Based on that?
Would be based on requiring them to comply with that.
That answers, okay.
Based on staff recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
Denise?
Pete, you were referring to the landscaping where do you, I neglected, I thought I had marked it, but I have on page eight is where you go into that analysis. Is that correct?
Thank you.
You said a page when you were giving your report, and I neglected to jot it down.
Right. Well, in the landscaping section on page eight, we talk about the landscaping requirements. First, the landscaping plan has to include vertical and horizontal elements, so grass, ground, cover trees, and shrubs, that within three years will cover 100 percent of the landscape area. The landscaping requirement does not specify how many trees and shrubs are required in that plan, but their plan includes 23 trees of varying types and sizes. Does not specify which of those trees are proposed as just straight landscaping trees and which ones are proposed as mitigation trees for the ones that are being removed.
Is it, is it this?
Yeah, that's it, yeah. The one in your packet should have the landscape architect's stamp on it.
It was just, I probably didn't get it because I printed it on 11 by 14, and it didn't quite all come out except the part I guess I needed to see.
Okay, so if, that should be in your packet under stamped landscaping plan?
Right. Are you satisfied with the proposed plantings? Because none of these seem, I mean, I would strongly suggest that they be, you know, native materials, and I'm not sure that we grow European beeches around here or shore pine.
I rely on the landscape architect's expertise. There's no requirement to provide native species unless it's a city facility, a city native storm pond or that kind of thing.
I'll probably recommend it then.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not real, I know he's a professional, but...
Yeah.
Is that the staff?
We can...
No, this is the, their person.
Their person?
I just, you know, there's so many native, we have a list.
Mm-hmm, we have a list, yeah.
So many native species that would be much better than, I think, these. Vine maple is fine because that's native.
Typically, we require, we always require natives in the natural resource overlay district, and this is not within that district.
Well, I'm not real, I'm not real pleased that we're going to be removing 10 trees and then we're going to have little stick trees replace them. I think that that's not really good. I'd like to see a larger caliper, and I'd like to recommend that there'll be, you know, again, shore pine and European beech are not native to this area.
The, the tree removal proposal was reviewed against chapter 1741, which was a fairly comprehensively reworked piece of code from 2008 and 2010, and there, the amount of mitigation prior to that for a tree removal within a building footprint was at the discretion of the community development director. And the current standard actually has a separate column which requires mitigation to a certain level based on the diameter of the tree removed. And so that's what we, that's what we reviewed it against, yeah.
Is that based on the individual tree size or the total size of the caliper?
For each tree that's removed, there's a range in the code. So if you have a 12-inch tree and you fall within a 10 to 12-inch range, I don't, and then there's a number of trees specified for each tree that's removed if they're, when they fall within that diameter range.
These are all, look like they're 14, 18, 15, 16.
Those are the existing?
Yeah, the existing.
Page, I don't know which page of the staff report I wrote that one.
There's so many. Also, just, the other thing was is that the information that was submitted regarding lighting was a little hard to understand what it was unless you read those spec books all the time.
Right.
So I didn't really have a good idea what that was supposed to be.
Yeah.
It looked like it was a cut sheet out of a brochure of some sort.
Yeah, we had spec sheets for the lighting fixtures submitted, and then at the rear of one of the exhibits, there is a lighting plan. We do want a, as a condition of approval, a table submitted showing the minimum and maximum range in accordance with our lighting standards, and also some assurance that one of the lighting fixtures used is fully shielded because it appears to exceed our lumen threshold for a wall pack type light.
I didn't have any problem with where they were. I just couldn't tell what it was, because when it was copied, it came out kind of a big gray square.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if you have something better?
Maybe the applicant can provide something. Basically, the quality of the exhibits is fairly, fairly limited.
I didn't see it. Is there a lighting plans?
Beg your pardon?
Was there a lighting plan submitted?
Yeah, there is.
Where's that located?
The exhibit 7K and 7L are the lighting details and luminaire schedule.
Is that for security?
It's for security, but it's also to assure that there's not a lot of glare and light pollution. The code requires a maximum of .5 foot candles at the property line and that once you get over a certain wattage or light level, that the lighting fixtures be downcast and cut off, so that they're just providing light where it's needed rather than where it's not.
You getting there? You're trying to get there.
I don't find that, that, there's a light, was that in the engineering section?
I can't see what you're looking at.
We can't see what we're looking at either.
Let me pull that up.
I saw it. I just saw it a minute ago.
Mm-hmm. There should be a plan in your packet which has a shot of the building with all of the light fixtures referenced.
It's, and it's, the column is, it's the second PDF in the first, third PDF in the column?
Yeah, here it is, if you can all see this. First 17 pages of this are all fixtures. And then the last, oh, where is it? Here it is.
Okay.
This, this page is the lighting plan. Each, each of the fixtures that is shown on this are shown on this building. Over where I'm waving the mouse is the canopy under lighting, under, the, there are some wall sconces shown either side of the entrances called the Slim 18. There are four wall pack lights shown on this side of the building, which are the lights that we're requesting be fully shielded and cut off, and two of that same variety over here. And then a, a standard, or pole, pole mounted light with a 15-foot pole height and a three-foot arm next to this landscaping area over here. So that's where the lighting locations are. And then each one of those lighting fixtures was accompanied by a standardized cut sheet luminaire schedule. But what we don't have is a, a single table showing the minimum and maximum range for all of the lighting on the site, which we're requesting as a condition of approval. And if we find that those lighting levels need to come down based on that analysis, we will request that the applicant provide a revision to the lighting plan. But typically, that's something that's done, you know, once the building's in place and they, and they can start fixing, lighting fixtures the outside of it during the electrical permit process, we can make sure that that happens. So we've got a condition of approval that covers that.
You gotta meet those standards anyway, though.
Yeah, if it was a staff-level review, they'd have to meet them anyway, yeah.
Besides, the placement of those lights are quite far away from any residential...
That's true. I, I mean, most of these luminaire schedules, they show this chart, which is very hard to understand unless you've seen one before. This is basically the 0 to 48 feet, and this outer ring here is .1 foot candles, and the inner ring is .5 foot candles. So, the lighting level is met, it's not exceeding the lighting level beyond this point, you know, so you're right. For each one of the luminaires that are fixed, we've, we've taken this as adequate, that we can approve this, but we'd like to see the, the final details on a table.
Other questions on the lighting?
Pete, if you could go back to the table you had for the variances, I had a couple of questions for you on that. I guess the question I had goes to the question of the minimum wall articulation and the transparency. You indicated that the staff satisfied that those issues had been mitigated sufficiently, and I was curious to hear how the staff came to the conclusion that those items had been mitigated sufficiently for approval.
The applicant's response to that was that the variation in siding materials and paint color and landscape screening would serve to mitigate any impacts associated with that variance, and we agreed with them on that. So, through the use of paint colors, a different type of material for the, using the hardy plank siding and the panels, and landscape screening adjacent, budding the building, adequate in our opinion to mitigate for it.
Can you go back to the colored elevation you had?
Sure.
Is there hardy plank siding anywhere else on the school? I, I didn't see any.
No, but part of the idea behind the compatibility there is that they not only fit in with the existing building from a color generalized material standard, but also with adjacent residential areas. And so this is very much a residential type of material. So in that regard, it's compatible with adjacent architecture, but may not be identical to what's on the existing building, yeah.
So the $64,000 question. Is this a permanent building or is this a temporary building?
I'd have to have the applicant respond to that. Really don't know what their projected use of the facility is in the very long term. Basically, we look at all buildings as permanent when we review them under site plan and design review. We don't have a temporary building...
Nope, I know we don't.
...provision in our code, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
And now we'll hear from the applicant.
Duck.
My name is Rick Givens. I'm a planning consultant, working with the school district on this project. To my right is Ted Thonstad with the school district. And in the audience, we've got Zach Stokes from ZCS Engineering. If there are engineering questions that may come up. This project is designed to help the school district meet some needs that Ted will talk about in just a moment. But basically, there were a lot of considerations in looking at how to go about placing this unit on, on the property. School districts, as you know, have very difficult times these days with budgets, and therefore, we're looking for economical ways to accomplish their mission of providing adequate school facilities for students within the Oregon City School District. And that necessitated the discussion of modular units. But as you'll notice, this is not your typical deal where we were coming to you with a series of modulators that look like standard manufactured homes, but it's actually a modular building where the units are put together into a single, single building that will function much better than individual, you know, two, most of those individual modules you've probably seen on many campuses have two classrooms in it. And in this case, we're putting it all in one facility that has hallways and shared restrooms, and will work much better and also much easier for the district to maintain. The location of the building really was a matter of looking at the site and finding an area that would work functionally from the standpoint of providing for interconnection with the main school building to provide for students moving back and forth to, you know, gym and various other school functions, and finding a way to locate it such that that could happen readily and also fit with the ability to get an entrance into the building in a logical location. Beyond that, we were working with some significant constraints of major utility lines that run under the school property and connect with other adjacent residential areas. There's a sewer line and also a major 12-inch water main that goes through the property. And there are easements for those, and that really, you know, we were initially looking at pulling the modular further away from the east wing of the, the building... at pulling the modular further away from the east wing of the, the building and trying to retain the, uh, the trees, but it just became obvious as we got in and looked at the, um, survey results of where utilities were, that that simply was not practicable, and also that it just didn't work from the functional ca- uh, consideration of making the logical connection to the school. So for that reason, on Earth Day, we are here proposing to remove some trees. It's not something the school district takes lightly, but they are proposing considerable mitigation. The mitigation, as you know, was reviewed for compliance with the code, it's for clear and objective standards that are in place. I know Commissioner McGriff raised concerns about the types of trees being planted, um, and I think we're willing to look at, uh, having our landscape architect talk to the, the staff and come up with maybe a few more native, uh, tree species to replace some of those that are not. But in general, we think the plan provides mitigation and also provides a, a very nice, um, environment at the rear of the school. With that, I'm gonna turn the discussion over to, uh, Mr. Thonstad to talk a little about why we're here initially.
I'm Ted Thonstad, I'm the Director of Operations for the Oregon City School District. Uh, just wanna thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening in regards to the district's project to locate an eight-classroom modular Gardner Middle School to house our sixth grade students. And there are three reasons for the district's decision to add the sixth grade to the middle school. Just wanna walk you through those for just a minute. The first reason is a savings to be realized by closing two small elementary schools. As you know, school districts are struggling right now because of the, their reliance on state school funding, and that has been down. So, a couple of years ago, we started looking for ways that we could save some money and put, keep our teachers in the classroom, and so, we looked at moving our sixth graders, closing two elementary schools and moving our sixth graders, uh, to the middle schools. We did that for more than one reason, but number one reason was just because we projected it would save us about two million dollars over the next three years. And by moving the, by moving the sixth graders out of Mount Pleasant, the district can either sell or lease that building and have a source of income that'll help us generate much needing, needed funding for roofing projects and also for heating and ventilation system upgrades to other schools. The second reason is the new common core standards, which were adopted in two thousand and ten and must be fully implemented by two thousand fourteen, fifteen. The curriculum for those new standards, uh, is written in a K five, six, eight, and nine, twelve framework. The six, eight middle school configuration is essential for facilitating teacher collaboration necessary to align the curriculum across the three grade levels, and this collaboration would be extremely difficult to accomplish if the sixth graders and the teachers were not in the middle school. The third reason is better utilization of classroom space in the remaining elementary schools. Because of the continuing decline in enrollment, there was excess capacity in the elementary schools, buildings across the district, and realigning the elementary school boundaries allowed the district to take advantage of the excess capacity, as well as create full day, space for full-day kindergarten, which is scheduled to begin in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Moving the sixth grades, sixth grade to the middle school does require additional capacity. We put modulators in, the standard modular-type buildings in at Ogden Middle School last year, and now we're wanting to put a actual modular building at Gardner, and I think Rick has stated why we picked that particular location. We worked very hard, Commissioner McGriff, to try to save those trees, but as we looked at the areas around there, the, the sewer line and the water line, and what we would have to do if we didn't put the, that building in that location, uh, it just became clear to us that that's, we needed to get it as close to the building as we could get it. That also gives us sixth graders access to the building. They need that close access to that building because they will be going there to take elective classes. They will also go to take, uh, sixth graders can, if they're a little bit ahead in math, they can take seventh-grade math, or they can take even eighth, someone could take eighth grade math, so they'll have access to the building and be able to go do that. And then they need to be able to go there to eat lunch, and go to the library, and for gym, and the computer lab, so having the building accessible to the current building, uh, was, was important to us. And then there's a third need, uh, which impacts both the school district and the community, and that's, we have a shortage of, of, um, athletic and activity areas across the district and within Oregon City, and we were wanting to make sure that we didn't impact any of those areas. In fact, uh, the district just recently removed the deteriorating tennis courts at Gardner in order to create a soccer and lacrosse field. But the demand for fields between not only the school district, but the community use sports is extremely high, and we're constantly, uh, struggling to find enough space for the, for kids to participate in those activities. So, glad to answer any questions.
I'd like to, to move back to discussion of some, some of the conditions of approval and, uh, a couple other aspects of the application, so if you wanna address Ted right now, that's fine, or you can hold until I'm, I'm done with my presentation, whichever you prefer.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead?
All right, thank you. Um, we have reviewed the conditions of approval as suggested by staff, and really only have comments on a couple of them. Regarding the bicycle variance, um, we're essentially going to agree with staff at this point. It wasn't so much that the district is against providing bicycle, uh, facilities, it's, at this particular location, uh, the access is kind of not real safe, and so the idea of spending, um, funds that were in short supply to provide something that the school district wasn't necessarily wanting to encourage, to provide bicycle pu- uh, riding to the school on, on, you know, Ethel Street and Hood Street don't have the greatest of widths, and the Lynn is a very heavily-traveled, uh, facility. That was the thought process in going and asking for the variance. It wasn't, so being against necessarily providing for bicycle, uh, things at, at most schools. It was this particular one, we had some concerns. But it's, it, on our site plan that we submitted, we were initially proposing that if we did provide bicycle, uh, facilities, they would be located, uh, at the west end of, uh, the main building, which I have no way of pointing at exactly, but...
You have a pointer over there he can show us?
Google the mouse. Google the mouse. Hey, there you go. Thank you very much.
Now you have a plethora of them.
We were looking at putting him in this location on our original submittal. The, uh, existing bike racks are over here, and upon further consideration, there's quite a bit of vacant space in this location, and so we would prefer, rather than as condition number thirteen, I believe it is, suggests, uh, putting it in the spot that we showed on our site plan, we'd like to ask the planning commission to modify it to allow us to expand the existing bicycle racks, so they're all in one spot, and they can provide better security in that location.
Where's the front door on this site plan?
It's right in here.
So is this gonna be covered?
It is covered, yes.
No, I mean, where you're proposing.
Existing ones are covered, and then we'll be providing covers for them.
Nobody likes to sit on a wet seat.
Yeah, you can see, this is the existing, uh, bicycle parking area that, uh, we would be expanding a similar kind of treatment.
So that's what you mean by essentially? I mean, I hear that word, that word essentially, agree? You agree to, to add the, the extra spots, but just at a different location that what they're suggesting?
Yes, we are, we are agreeing to provide the additional spots and, uh, not continue with a variance application on that particular point, and we are suggesting, rather than doing it where, the location we originally proposed, that we put it adjacent to the existing bicycle racks.
I just hear that word essentially, and I go, huh.
They gotta trust me.
It's an art standard.
Can we ask the staff if that's, if that's, I mean, is that right to ask staff if that's okay?
Let's, let's let the applicant finish his presentation, we can get back to the staff.
Okay.
Sure, Ted, we'd like to make another comment on that.
One of the reasons for that is because we had bicycle parking elsewhere on the grounds, and when we, this new, this bicycle parking area was actually done as an Eagle project, and we moved, when we had it on the other areas of the grounds, we were having damage to bicycles and bicycles being stolen. We moved it to that spot, and the windows of the office look out on those bicycles, and we have not had a problem with bicycles being damaged or stolen since. So when I talked to the principal about it and showed her where we were proposing it, she said, "Oh, no, please put it where we can watch it." So, that's, and there's room there to do it. We've had the, the, uh, planners look at that, the art planners look at that, and there's room to fit in the bicycle for, rack for thirty-two bicycles in that area, so.
The other condition that we'd like to talk about is condition number five, which talks about, uh, required occupancy to improve the utility of the loop-drive frontage for pickups and drop-offs, while accommodating through three short buses. So, we have come up with a plan to do that in a better fashion. I'd like to introduce that into the record if I may.
Yeah, there's three of them.
Leave that one for me to point at.
Okay. And this is not final, but it's close.
This plan is, is not final, but it is approximately what will be proposed. Um, the area that we're talking about is in here, and as of right now, there are three shorter buses that come in for...
They're special ed buses. They park right in front of the building.
Right in this area.
Yeah, right in front of the building, right there.
The law proposes there's a wall that's located in this location here, and the, the plan being proposed is to take that wall out and to extend a sidewalk from this location out along the parking bays and eventually over to here as well.
And to do a curb cut for the, for the small buses along that curb, so they're not out of the way of the cars. I was out there on Friday with the three buses parked there, and the cars trying to go around that loop, and it, it's very, very tight, and we're really concerned about kids running out between the buses and getting hit by the cars, so we need to get the buses out of that in front of the school area, and this, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
This plan would do that, if you can, it's a little hard to understand, but it shows a curb cut for the buses. I know when you look at it initially, it's hard to tell what you're looking at.
Yeah, essentially, the idea is to come along here and extend in this area, so there would be an area to actually pull out of the traffic into, and have parking here, and then have a sidewalk, but get some back over there without going anywhere near the cars. So we believe this is a safer solution than what was being discussed previously, and that accommodates condition number five, but we would ask that this design be adopted as part of our proposal. Yep? Yes?
When those school buses are loading, you're telling me that cars are pulling out around it?
Well, the, I think the condition, Commissioner Mahoney, was that we would, uh, mark the spots for the buses to park, and we'd still let the cars come into that loop and to pick up and drop off kids. And my observation last Friday was that when you get the three buses in there, number one, it's difficult for the cars to go through there, and number two, you're going to have kids running between those buses, no matter what we try to do, we could put people out there to watch them, but they're middle school kids. They're gonna run between those buses, and I'm really concerned about one of them being injured by doing that. So if we get the buses out of there, we don't have that problem, and then the cars can pull through there and do what the city is asking that, which, which is in condition number five.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, this is for safety, but I was always under the impression that when a school bus was being loaded, that you couldn't pull out, there was a stop sign that came out from the...
When they come up to a school and stop to pick up kids, they don't put that...
They don't.
They don't use that, no.
And you still got kids running between and all over.
Unfortunately.
That's amazing.
You try to do everything you can to prevent that, but it's, it's a challenge.
Well, I understand with the kids, but I don't quite understand the logic with the cars. Things happen.
If, I, you know, I invite you to come out there at three twenty-five and, and watch what's going on.
Bob will be there tomorrow, right?
Anyway, we believe this plan, you know, keeps as much separation as possible between the loading area for kids and, and other drop-off traffic, and keeps the full throat of that turnaround area open for vehicular traffic, so that if people are dropping kids off, there's still room for cars to maneuver around them, and we think it's the safest and most logical way of accommodating that. I know that there were some things being discussed regarding landscaping particulars, uh, and I guess what I often see happen at these hearings is, the record gets closed and I don't get a chance to talk anymore. So, I'd like to request, I guess, that if there are some specific things that you're suggesting be proposed, um, but we talked about it now, and we have a chance for a little input in the process.
Well, the city has a list of plants that does include native species, and I think, you know, since today is Earth Day, and since you brought it up, that it would behoove us to not introduce material, planting materials that are not appropriate for this particular climate and the rainfall, and it would seem to me that it would cost the ci- cost the school district less in the long term if they have native plantings, because they'll, they're better adapted to our particular conditions here.
I don't think we have any problem with that. We went with our landscape architect's recommendations and frankly did consider that, so I think that he is, certainly can come and visit with the city planning staff and suggest some changes.
Yeah, I think they can pick some other things off the, off the list that are more appropriate than a European beach and, and shore pine, which, you know, unless something happens, we're not planning on having any shore around here for quite a while, but...
That's probably true.
But, uh, you know, we've been told the big one's coming, so we could all have oceanfront property.
Could be any time.
I apologize a little bit for the, uh, difficulty in understanding the, uh, the lighting situation. Uh, it was all kind of like pulling teeth to get information out of the manufacturer on that, so, um, we certainly have no problem with the condition that we provide, you know, the table and give you all that additional information as part of the final plan review. Are there any other questions you have us at this point?
Yeah, so I had the question of, is this permanent, or is this something that is temporary?
I would say that there was a time in my experience that modular buildings were considered temporary. Modular buildings have become permanent, especially when they're built to the standards that these are built to. These are built to state specifications, uh, there are two-by-six walls on the exterior, there, everything has to be the code, billing codes of the state, and so, you can drive around and look at where these buildings are on school campuses and find out how long they've been there, and many of them have been there a long time, so...
Yeah, and unfortunately, it's unfortunate that they are. So that you said in your testimony that the school district was gonna be saving about two million dollars because they've closed two small neighborhood schools, so what's the cost of this versus, why didn't the school district consider building a classroom that would be more appropriate, integrate better with the school, instead of, you know, I feel sorry for the Thorabie Gardner sixth graders if they have to be in a modular building with, with off-gassing vinyl windows?
Well, actually, I, I think you'll find that if you talk to teachers who are in modular classrooms, that they like those buildings. Now, uh, why did we do this? Because we can do it, I forget what the square foot cost is, but it's, it's about a half, at least half of what it would cost us to build a stick-built, stick-built building. So...
And I'm, and again, I'm, I'm asking these questions because it relates to me to the conditional use permit. I know that the site is suitable for a new building, so I don't have any issue with that, but it's, I guess what I'm getting at is that we, right now, the students are housed at, at Mount Pleasant. It's there, it's built, it's available, but yet we're going to be spending money on a modular unit.
We need, number one, as I said, we need to get the, we need to get the students in a six, eight, uh, configuration, but number two, Mount Pleasant is a, is a very expensive building to operate. Uh, it's a very expensive building to maintain, it's one of the oldest, oldest buildings in, in the district, and we don't need all the space that's there for the sixth graders. And, and the problem is, it was a small elementary school, could hold, had a capacity of about four hundred students, and if you check and see how elementary schools are building built today, they're being built for six hundred to eight hundred students, just to lower the co- operation cost and the, and the overhead cost of those buildings. So, by doing this, we, we are lowering our overhead costs considerably. We had one principal at the middle school, we'll still have one principal at the middle sc- or we have an assistant and one principal. We had a principal at Mount Pleasant that we no longer will have, we had an office staff at Mount Pleasant that we no longer will have, we had a maintenance staff at Mount Pleasant... Pleasant that we'll no longer have, and those people...
Don't you still have to maintain it?
Not if we lease it or sell it, which is our goal.
Okay.
So, and that would generate much-needed dollars for other improvements and upgrades in other buildings.
So again, what's the cost of this versus the $2 million savings that you had stated for the record?
Well, it's going, this building itself is going to cost the district about, oh, I think it's about 1.4 million dollars by the time we do all of the, all of the groundwork and all of the, and the building itself. The building itself is less than a million dollars, but by the time you add the other issues, it's a project, the site work, it goes up to 1.4, about 1.4.
Can I make a couple of comments additionally? First, regarding the variances that have been requested, I would point out that those standards were adopted with the intent that institutional buildings would be placed within five feet of the, of the street. So, most of those standards are looking at addressing, you know, how, the aesthetic of the building viewed from, close on from a public thoroughfare. And obviously, that's can't happen here for a variety of reasons we talked about, simply because of the, you know, how many street frontages except for where we access and egress the site. And also, we've got an existing building to deal with and parking facilities and all that. So, some of those standards, even though we technically have to apply for variances, they don't really make any sense for where the building is being located. We're 240 feet, I think it is roughly, from the closest property line. We're behind the building. It is not viewed directly from a street at all. So, from that standpoint, you know, we went through all of the criteria, but I think just from a logic standpoint, it makes sense to say, well, these standards don't really make a lot of sense, given what's being proposed here. The other thing I guess I would have to say is that the district is proposing a structure that is fully compliant with the code. There's no provision in your code that addresses the issue of modular versus stick-built. For that reason, I don't think it's applicable to this, other than perhaps in the general sense of talking about, is there something about what's being proposed here that, that makes it not suitable for the, under one of the conditional use criteria and such as impact on the surrounding area. And I think you'd be, if you look at it objectively, it's pretty clear that we're not. We're 240 feet away from our nearest neighbors, and we're going to provide a lot of landscaping. And this is not an unattractive building. It certainly is in keeping with the size and general architectural characteristics of what you would find in the surrounding residential area. No, we can't use the same siding and materials that are in place on a building that was built in, in place and that has brick and, you know, various other kinds of materials on it. That doesn't make sense for a modular building. But, we're proposing materials that are fully in keeping with the character of the surrounding area. It's an R6 zone. We're providing materials that are very commonly used in almost all residential construction these days, so we're, we're in keeping with what's going on around us. Certainly, there's nothing being proposed here that would be of impact to a surrounding neighborhood in any way that we can see, other than providing better school facilities. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yep.
I've got one. It's just a point of information. Was any consideration given to the feasibility of taking those trees, scooping them out, and what do they call them? Wrap them?
Spade thing, yeah.
Yeah. Are they too big to do that? Probably damage the tree in the process.
I think they're too big and too root-bound, because they're close together, that the roots are probably all entwined. And then when you do that, you have a, you know, not a lot of chance of saving the tree, basically.
FYI, Bob, there's a company in Oregon called Big Trees of Oregon, and they have gigantic scooper thingies that...
Oh, is that right?
But again, the way these trees are, are planted, that is more than likely correct, that they are, they have overlapping root systems. It would be very, very difficult to move them.
Kill the tree in an effort to save it.
Maybe they can use the, the material comes from the trees at the, in a shop class.
Okay. There you go.
Well, you know, you, you make something out of it, and then you sell it to the parents and generate income for the, for the parent-teacher organization or something like that.
I like your thought process. Yes.
I know of a school that did that.
Really?
And went really expensive at the auction, because everybody wanted a piece of something that came from the school.
The tree?
That's a good idea.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We won't have, we can't, we have to continue this.
So, at, at this time, we will hear from, I have two, two cards from the audience of people who would like to speak. William Gifford will be first.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, or what's left of you. My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. Since I've only got a couple of minutes, I want to go through these briefly, and if you want to discuss any of them, that's fine, too. Number one is, it doesn't seem to me as though it's appropriate that we need to ask the justification as to why they're doing this. I don't know if that's a requirement. It's, I, I attended the, the hearings when the, when the school district was going through the difficult decisions, deciding which school to cut and, and the consolidation, and this seems to me like it was a legitimate mode, but I don't know if that's something that needs to be considered tonight. Number two is, I wanted to agree very much with, with Commissioner McGriff regarding the native plants. I think that's, that's brilliant. And there's another opportunity that I hope that the school district will use to, to employ this as an educational opportunity for the kids to understand why the trees are being taken out and, and how it's being done. I hope they get involved in the whole project, actually. Let me see. Number three, bike spaces apparently have been mitigated. I think that's, that's reasonable. Number four, I don't, I didn't hear anything at all about, and I'm just noticing that road around the edge there. I'm assuming that's adequate for fire and emergency access. The backside of that building, I, I assume staff has, has contacted the, the fire district to make sure that they can get back there and so on. Thank you. And the last one, I just don't know if, if consideration was given to a covered walkway between the building proper and the proposed modular expansion. We do have some, some inclement weather once in a while here in Oregon, not like today, and I don't know, I'm not trying to add any cost to the project or not, or excessive, but has there been consideration to a covered walkway between?
I believe there is a covered walkway.
There is one shown on the plan.
Oh, good.
It's not covered on the side, so if the wind, you know, the rain goes like that, they're, they're going to get it anyway, but...
Yeah, well, they're supposed to be tough, but it would be nice if, if that would be considered. Those are my comments.
Thank you. The next person speaking is Damon Mayby.
I don't know. This person looks extremely suspicious.
Two minutes.
I think it's three, actually.
Three. Damon Mayby, Oregon City resident and former Gardner Middle School student.
I thought that was Thorabie Gardner.
I said Gardner Middle School. So, see, it's what it says on the map, Gardner Middle School. Anyway, I guess the biggest question I've got is, I haven't seen any, or heard any discussion concerning mitigation of the traffic. Both Hood and Ethel are substandard streets. We're proposing an additional third increase in bus traffic. Well, it's only a third increase in trips. It's a third increase in heavy vehicle trips. There are no sidewalks on Hood or Ethel from there all the way up to Lynn, and, you know, you're, we're, they're proposing additional students. That's one of the reasons why they didn't want to add bicycles, was because the streets weren't very safe. I rode those streets on my bicycle, and there used to be lots of kids riding bicycles. Comment that I've heard from some students who attend there, while I was either teaching there or just interacting with them, is there's no place to put their bikes anymore, so nobody rides their bikes. So that means mom and dad drive them, which creates the conflicts around the buses. So, you know, I remember bikes being double and triple chained to, to the few bike racks there were because there just wasn't enough spots. So, my, my concern is that this expansion, I don't care what the material is, I don't care about trees, you know that, but what is the impact on the surrounding community with the additional traffic, both foot, bike, bus, car? I haven't seen any mitigation from that, and it seems like even just putting one nice contiguous sidewalk from there up to Lynn, which by the way, has no lights, so all those buses get to wait and be in traffic conflict. And then, my last comment goes back to the justification question that, that William raised. I have real concern that all five inner-city elementary schools are being abandoned. Eastham still does some stuff, Berkeley still does some stuff, but King had 40 homes built right across the street from it, and those kids can look out their window at a school that they can't go to, that they have to now be bused down to McLaughlin. The commit, the, the charge of the planning commission is to help keep the city vital, to deal with urban density, and this plan of the school district is abandoning the, the inner city. It's forcing people to live out in the suburbs. If I'm going to have a, buy a house in McLaughlin and know that I'm, by doing that, you know, a new construction in McLaughlin, that I'm going to have my kids sitting on a bus for 45 minutes, why not just spend a little extra money, or maybe even less money, and buy a house around Gaffney Lane, or South End, or, you know, someplace closer to the school, so they can ride their bikes back and forth? So, while I understand lots of agonizing debate occurred at the school board meetings, and I watched many of them, I just think that the city has a voice in the erosion of, of their infrastructure, and I think this is where that voice can be heard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, before you go, question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayby, you did bring up an adequate, very, more than adequate point about increase in traffic. And I know that many of the streets in that particular area, as you indicated, are underdeveloped, and if we want to try to promote more walking and biking, you've made some suggestions on how we can get there. I, I think that that is something that's remiss, and if I may, while you're still there, is there, Mr. Lewis, are there any proposed plans to do any improvements in there, or even minimal improvements? I'm presuming it would have to be up to adjacent property owners or some other method of getting sidewalks to our schools, to this particular school, not just this one, but others, but let's talk about this one in particular?
This one in particular, I know, I don't know of any plans for additional sidewalks or bike lanes.
Well, I mean, there aren't any, so I guess if there was an additional one, there would be one, but, I mean, you...
Adding sidewalks, I guess is what I should say.
Well, you bring up, I mean, you bring up an excellent point. Actually, if I may compliment you, you bring up two excellent points. The, there is an issue, and I guess we should talk to our staff more about that. I was going to bring that up, and I reviewed Mr., let me see, the Lan, is it Lancaster Engineering's Traffic Impact Study and Parking Analysis, and he didn't really talk about it, and I don't think our traffic engineer talked about it at all. And I guess while you're on the record, you bring up another point, is that, again, if we're talking about, and this is a broader issue, this, this is slightly related to this request, but it is a problem that you bring up. In order to get more density in our community, people want to move around where there are schools. Take me as an example. When I moved to Oregon City 22 years ago, I moved into my neighborhood in particular because there was a neighborhood school. By the time my child got to school age, Berkeley had closed, Eastham had closed, and they were going to bus him to Park Place, which I found unacceptable, because it would have been a 45-minute bus right up there, and I did not see myself driving that every day. That was unacceptable as well. So, in order, as you say, in order to facilitate a compact urban form, we have to have schools where there's the density. And if our schools are getting closed or sold, case in point, Waldorf School in Milwaukee, people who go to that school, as wonderful it is, don't live in that neighborhood, and they're all driving there. So that's a big problem, and I'm not sure, maybe it's something that we need to have a, a session with the school board to talk about this as a, as Tony's writing this down, future discussion item, because I think it is, it's a threat to our comprehensive plan. It's a threat to our inner-city neighborhoods, if you want to call Oregon City, we don't really have an inner city, but it's a threat to the, to the neighborhoods that are not on the perimeter of our community. And to have everything driven to McLaughlin or the two junior highs, which are kind of, and then we have everybody driving down to Beaver Creek Road to get to the high school, we're kind of shooting ourselves on the foot. So I really appreciate...
We're becoming a donut community.
I really appreciate your bringing that up, because that is, that is a topic that is near and dear to my, to my heart. Thank you.
Can I just add to that? You know, I've always been amazed, because I was in Portland for a long time. I saw Jackson High School, brand-new high school build, and Adams, all these schools that, who was thinking ahead that we're going to have all these students, and they built all these schools, and then close them all down, and they just set empty all the time? It's not a discussion that affects this, but I agree with you.
It's, it's an issue. I, I really do...
Kind of a waste of building.
I do hope that we can have a discussion with this, with the school board or the school superintendent, because it's a big problem.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Tom, if it's not a, if it's not an issue concerning this application, then why are we talking about it?
I know. I just was agreeing with the conversation here.
No, I, I agree with, with what you're both saying.
Yeah, so Pete...
Wholeheartedly. And it does affect the comprehensive plan. It really does, and the growth of this community.
Yeah, so it's a future topic.
It's a future topic.
Yes.
Because we've been asked to decide whether or not the location of that...
So Pete...
I, I don't think, at this point, we're, we're looking at the, the overall comprehensive plan. That's really a subject for another discussion.
So could we have Pete address Mr. Mayby's comments about the sidewalks?
Before we do that, the point of order will be to get the applicant's rebuttal to public comments. I don't have any more cards for public comments, so seeing none, give the applicant an opportunity to provide a rebuttal.
For the record, this is Rick Givens of Ted Fonsdott again. Why don't you start, Ted? You've got some points you want to...
Well, I'll start with the note, with the extra bus trips. There won't be any extra bus trips, because the buses that are currently taking the students to Mount Pleasant, well, those students are on those buses, and they will bring those students, instead of dropping them at Mount Pleasant or picking them up from Mount Pleasant, they will bring them to Gardner Middle School. So, we're currently using the same buses to meet the needs of both, all, all three grades of students. So, won't have any extra bus trips. Additional traffic, I think the traffic study done by Lancaster went through and detailed the additional traffic and the impact on all of the intersections, and indicated that it was, I can't remember the exact word he used, but it was minor for the way my, or my synonym for that would be. I don't, I think I make a comment on the closing of inner school, inner-city schools if you want me to, but if you want to defer that to the, getting, having a discussion with the school board, that's, that's fine.
Yeah. That'd be just fine. We, you might want to let Larry know that.
Yeah, I will. Let Larry know that you guys want to have that discussion. I think it's always good for cities and school districts to talk about what's going on, so that would be, I'm sure Larry would welcome that opportunity.
Who's Larry?
The superintendent. Larry Didways, the superintendent.
Thank you for the record.
Sorry, he's been around for a while. He's...
I'm a newbie.
He's been Larry since he was the community school director to me.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Continue.
I don't have a lot of additional comment, other than the road meeting, fire safety, yes, is being designed to meet fire safety requirements. As noted, there is a covered walkway proposed. Understand, everybody likes native trees. We're okay with that. Some of the other comments, I think, are something to think about as far as education... Some of the other comments, I think, are something to think about, as far as educational aspects of tree removals. I understand the planning commission's discussions about these concerns of closing schools, and I think, as Mr. Fonsdott noted, that's a great topic for discussion, but probably is out, well outside the scope of this, and really not relating to the approval criteria. So unless you have some specific questions, yes?
I've, you've talked about the streets being fine for bus traffic, but I still, something that Damon said about even sidewalks, no, I mean, if people wanted to drop their kids off, there's no sidewalks in and out from the main street into the school, is that correct, from what Damon said? Not one sidewalk where they could walk?
There's, there's, there's sidewalks on the school campus.
But nothing from-
If he's talking about, if you're talking about on Hood Street and Ethel Street-
Or Ethel.
I think there's maybe one or two little sections where there's one, there's not much, no.
So kids are forced to ride their bikes in the road?
What Damon is talking about is off-site.
That's what I was talking, down Ethel and down Hood, a sidewalk or someplace, or where kids ride bikes, or something, other than in the road?
That if, if you-
There is a sidewalk on Holmes.
There is?
Yeah.
But Ethel or Hood?
Ethel, I believe, no.
That neighborhood is generally a street-
I've not been there.
There's no sidewalks.
Okay.
Though the people do have access via pedestrian pathways, the staff mentioned from three locations, and a kind of an informal one from Warner Melney as well, but as far as Hood and Ethel, it's not good.
Pete, are there a lot of kids that walk to school these days?
Not as many as quite honestly I thought there were. I just asked for that information last week, and was surprised. We have a lot more kids riding the buses than I thought we had riding the buses, so, and then we have a lot of parents bringing their, bringing their students, and we don't really keep a record of that, so.
Do you have any, any issue with our traffic engineers recommending that, he says there appears to be a gap in the sidewalk adjacent to the school in the northeast quadrant of the intersection where Hood Street turns, and where access is provided to the south parking lot? This intersection features the Gardner sign. I recommend that the sidewalk and ADA compliant ramps be installed at this location to improve pedestrian accessibility to the site from the marked crosswalks at this intersection.
We, we would do that, that's not a problem. We, I, we would agree that that needs to be done.
Can I ask a question that hasn't been brought up, as I was sitting here listening to all this? On modular school, schools, the, the classrooms, are they protected for earthquakes? I mean, are they attached physically to the ground so that they're not gonna shake in an earthquake?
They're on a solid cement foundation, yeah.
Okay.
These, these are being built all over. Jervish, down by Salem, is actually replacing two of their schools with modular buildings, twelve-classroom buildings. You can find them in Salem, you can find them in Portland, you can find them all over.
I've seen them, I just didn't know how they were attached.
Yeah, they are attached.
Thinking of earthquakes and slides.
They are attached to foundations the same way you would attach a house to the foundation.
All right.
Yes, they, they do have to comply with the building code.
I just wish they wouldn't have those vinyl windows in them. I don't think they're all that great.
Are there any other questions for the applicant at this point?
I would just like to point out-
Just repeat.
A couple things real quick, while the record's still open. John Replinger reviewed the transportation report that was prepared for this. He identified that the, all the intersections that were studied would continue to operate to acceptable levels per the Oregon City Municipal Code. He did identify the one ADA sidewalk improvement on site that Commissioner McGriff just discussed with the applicant. The second issue is the applicant has talked about creating a bus pullout on the north side of the site. We just wanna point out that there are landscaping requirements associated with a parking lot. In chapter seventeen sixty-two, which is our site plan and design review, specifically seventeen sixty-two point zero one five, gives the review authority the ability to make adjustments to design criteria that they feel are appropriate. We would be recommending that the applicant and that the commission consider, you know, what it, what it says is that when you're building that sidewalk in the parking lot, you either need to build a seven-foot sidewalk with tree wells and trees every thirty-five feet, or a five-foot sidewalk with trees behind it on thirty-five feet plus landscaping and an evergreen hedge. Rather than amending the variance, I believe that the commission should consider making an adjustment which would allow the applicant the flexibility to either put in the seven-foot sidewalk with the tree wells. If there's a conflict between the buses and the trees, that then they could put in a five-foot sidewalk with the trees behind it. I really don't see a need for the hedge in the understory here. Their other alternative would be to put in a five-foot planar strip with a five-foot sidewalk behind it. Considering it's a loading area, I don't really think that's appropriate either. So I just wanted to clarify that, I, I think it's an appropriate adjustment that would give them the flexibility to either meet the sidewalk standards and the planting requirements, or to put the trees behind it without the, the evergreen hedge or the grant, landscaping.
Would we then be adding an adjustment to their proposal?
We would be, we, we would write it, we have a condition that we would-
So that, that would be another condition?
Well-
Condition of approval?
We, what you, I think that we can just do it through-
Well, I think we can draft the condition now, and we will include findings as part of the final decision per your instructions that would support a modification, given the location of the trees. I mean, we want the trees to be behind the sidewalk, so that they don't care the access-
They don't interfere with the buses, exactly. Right.
My voice carries a lot, I don't hardly-
Could you review all that?
You were getting picked up on Tom's microphone, so it's not a problem.
I was probably picked up on Commissioner Mahoney's microphone.
And I think one other thing, you know, if this was a, you know, I think we'd be having a different discussion if this was a brand-new elementary school going in, and there were deficiencies in the sidewalk system from the main street connecting to the facility. This is a relatively minor addition, and I would be a little bit concerned about requiring full sidewalk improvements from the site to the main street, and not under, you know, not having a good understanding, right now off the top of my head, you know, right away, is there acquisition necessary in order to get a sidewalk in there and still design the street? I just, I, I really do think that what they're proposing is pretty limited relative to what we'd be exacting from them. I certainly think it's a, it's a, it's a discussion that we can certainly have down the road, but I'm not sure it's quite appropriate with what's being proposed here.
I think we're done with the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will close the public testimony at this time, and questions of staff?
Come on, Dale.
Commissioner McGriff?
No, no, so you can stay there, it's fine.
Questions of staff?
So, yeah, Tony alluded to the capacity analysis that is included in the transportation impact study. I just wanna summarize that. So, study area intersections were analyzed. Currently, Lynn Avenue at Holmes Lane operates at level of service B in the morning peak hour and afternoon peak hour, and is expected to continue the same at both peak periods, regardless of the increased enrollment. Holmes Lane at Leonard currently operates at level of service A in the peak hour and level of service B in the afternoon peak hour, and in the next school year, the intersection is expected to continue at the same level at both peak periods. And with the additional traffic resulting from the increased enrollment, the intersection is expected to operate at level of service B in both peak hours. Lynn and Ethel operates at level of service B in the morning and afternoon, and is expected to operate at level of service C during both peak hours. And Lynn Avenue at Hood Street currently operates at level of service B in both peak hours, and is expected to operate at level of service B in the morning peak hour and level of service C in the afternoon peak hour. The trip generation calculations that were included in this assume a growth rate of two percent for the area, which is a conservative analysis, and John Replinger agreed with that growth rate. And finally, they also did a crash safety, or crash analysis, and found that there'd been less than five crashes in the last, or less than one, sorry, I'll find that and quote it. Traffic counts-
The engineer, the crash intersection, the intersection exhibited low to modest crash rate. There was one fatal crash at Lynn and Ethel, which was due to alcohol and excessive speed. He concludes that there's no design issues at that intersection, will continue to operate safely, and we concur with those findings.
The, yeah, and finally, the total peak hour trip generation due to the additional students, two hundred and thirty-four students, in the morning peak hour, entering it's, is seventy trips, and exiting trips fifty-seven, for a total of one hundred and twenty-seven. Afternoon peak hour, entering trips additional are thirty-two, and exiting a forty-one, for a total of seventy-three. So, John Replinger recommended that the, the applicant make the onsite improvement of the addition of the curb ramp, which was discussed earlier. So that curb ramp is actually on the property, it's not a public right-of-way. It connects across the entering, entrance of Hood Street from where the existing sidewalk would be in that island there, across to the south side of Hood Street.
And that's condition number six?
Yeah, that is condition number, yes, yes, that's condition number six. As far as, yeah, the safe routes to school programs and other federal-type programs that potentially could help out to construct off-site improvements, that, that is definitely a pretty large magnitude project that would have to be worked out with the school district, with our transportation advisory committee, and public works department, and abutting property owners, and I don't believe that's within the scope of this application, but, you know.
Other questions for staff at this time?
Do you don't have any, do you have any issue with the request to work with them to plant some appropriate species of material?
Oh, not at all.
Since I know you're the keeper of the list.
Yeah, if they're willing to accommodate that request, we can certainly work with them to do that, yep.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Okay, so, commission discussion.
Well, my reaction to this is, I think everybody's pretty much on the same page and wants to proceed with this and approve it, but there's a, a lot of conditions here, and I'm not familiar with every, each and every one of them, but I don't see any adverse impact on the community or surrounding neighborhood that caused me to vote against it.
Tom?
I pretty much agree with Bob.
Oh, I don't have any specific concerns, other than those ones that I raised about plantings, and I, you know, I, I think that it behooves anybody that's proposing to mitigate landscaping or new landscaping, they should really always look at native species in the first place, 'cause cheaper in the long run, better for the environment. I agree with John Replinger, I wish there was a way we could have some safe routes to schools, because, again, we wanna promote children getting exercise, and if they're just getting dropped off from door to door, you know, they never get out, and, and they could be safe, but, you know, we'll have to work on that in the future. I think that I'd like to see a larger tree species planted than two-inch caliper, because two inches versus eighteen inches, that's, that's kinda tough to mitigate that, even if you plant like, three times as many. They take a long time to grow, and, you know, being that we have middle-school students, they could snap those like twigs.
That's right.
I think that the recommendation regarding the driveway turnoff, as reiterated by Mr. Conkle, is reasonable, and I think if they do that as specified, I don't think there should be any issues with that. Parents shouldn't be passing the school bus on the school grounds anyway, but that's a behavioral issue that we can't control.
Right. Okay. You know, I, I would agree with what Tony said, if, if we were looking at this as a, a new school from the ground up, I'm sure we'd have a much higher level of concern about all of these issues, and the fact that we're looking at a modular building that's set away from the road and set away from the other residences, definitely mitigates a lot of the concerns that I would otherwise have. I, just as an architect, I, I would say, I, I believe that there are a lot of ways to create more articulation on the building with minimal, minimal cost. I am familiar with modular building design, and I've seen some really amazing modular buildings that you wouldn't know that it was a modular building by looking at it, and I, I would suggest that if, if the applicant really wanted to spend just a couple dollars more here and there, they could probably find some ways to make the portion of the building that's visible, not the portion that's facing the other part of the school, but the portion that's more visible a little bit more attractive. And the other comment that I would have, is I, I agree with Denise, it would, in light of the fact that you're removing some fairly established trees, it would be nice if at least a few of the trees that are being replaced, to mitigate those trees that are being removed, were a larger caliper. I, I think that would go a long ways toward mitigating the appearance of the building, and I, I would suggest something in the four-to-six-inch caliper range, at least for some of the trees that are directly in front of the building, that would help mitigate the, the scale of the building and the appearance of the building. I would also agree with Tony's suggestion on how to deal with the sidewalk and the bus parking area. I would entertain a motion from the commission.
I would like to move that we approve, let's see, I get all my numbers here, and we have considerable numbers. CU twelve oh one, SP twelve nineteen, and VR twelve oh five, as, did you get all of that, that, that Tony said? Because I didn't, I just took sketchy notes on that, about the turnaround, the sidewalks, the, what am I missing?
The land, the land trees.
I can summarize what I think the conditions are, if that would be helpful.
That would be.
Okay.
I think we're looking at amending condition seven, related to the landscaping plan, to provide that European birch and shore pine trees identified by the applicant shall be replaced by native trees and approved by city staff. A number of the replacement trees shall be four-to-six-inch caliper, and I'm open for a quantifiable number of those trees in order to mitigate where the appearance of the building.
You say the sort of scale and the bulk of the building, that would kinda soften it, I think.
You wanna identify the number of those trees?
How many are removed?
How many are, Pete, how many are proposed to-
There'll be twenty-three on the site plan.
Removed?
No, twenty-three to be mitigated.
Proposed. And they're, they're removing ten?
They're removing ten, yeah.
Ten, I'd say at least ten.
Ten in the range of four to six inches. Are, are you going to amend condition number seven for that?
What I'm proposing, these would be additions to condition number seven. Condition number five will be amended to provide that the applicant shall approve the loop-drive frontage for pickup as identified in the applicant's bus parking, parking widening plan. And parking lot trees shall be located behind the sidewalks, as required by OCMC seventeen dot fifty-two dot oh six oh C one A regarding spacing. Condition number thirteen will be amended. Let me scroll to thirteen, excuse me, just a second. Just provide that the applicant- Just provide that the applicant shall provide at least 32 new bicycle spaces adjacent to the existing bike parking. The applicant shall indicate the design of the bicycle racks on all final construction plans and shall install bicycle parking in compliance with OCMC 17 52 oh 4 oh. I think that's all of them.
Right.
Could you, could you just amend that one little part, say, instead of saying the existing bicycle parking, so the existing covered bicycle parking? Because it is covered.
Okay, so the motion, the motion is to approve the application with the amended conditions of approval.
And I second it.
We have a second?
All right, I'll take a role. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I just wanted to make a suggestion. Now, we have two bike shops in town now. Maybe we can get one or both of them to sponsor a couple of bike racks at the school with maybe their name on it or something. I mean, it wouldn't hurt, wouldn't hurt to ask.
Maybe we can get a couple of commissioners to return to their seats. Actually.
You want to take a break? Five minutes?
I would entertain a five-minute break.
Five minute break, all right.
We're back, we're back in session and we will continue with PC 13 dash 12, 19-370 Pease Road, request for zone change and approval of an 11 lot subdivision and geologic hazards review, planning files, ZC 12 dash oh one, TP 12 dash oh four, and US 12 dash oh four. And this is a matter that's been continued from previous hearing. I want to ask the commissioners, do you have any expertise or bias regarding this proposal to declare that, or has any commissioner visited the site since the last hearing?
Yep, I drove, it was a nice day today. I went out for a drive and found Pease Road and, because I've got a reason to go there, so I was out along Pease Road just checking that out today.
Anybody else?
Same goes for me.
Yeah, I've visited it since then.
Yeah, I've taken a look at the site as well.
I have not visited since then.
No bias.
Does the audience have any questions of the commission regarding their declarations? And I should note that I don't have any new issues of bias or been to the site since the last hearing to declare either. Staff report, please.
All right, good evening. Laura Turway, planner with the city. Since we've already talked about this quite a bit at the last public hearing, I just wanted to provide a brief overview of the proposed development. We'll get into a little bit of detail regarding stormwater. The applicant has proposed a zone change from R 10, single-family dwelling district to R 6, an 11 lot subdivision, and a geologic hazards review. The proposed site plan's on your screen. We'll show it later in this slide as well. The subject site is adjacent to Pease Road, as you can tell from the aerial photo. It's generally surrounded by a variety of subdivisions, including single-family homes. The site is a little over two acres. The site contains a single-family home and an accessory structure. In the staff report, the recommended conditions of approval include demolishing the home and the accessory building before the subdivision is plotted. There is some fill material placed on site. It's located on the side of the site here. We talked about that at the last hearing. The site was annexed in 2008. It was under planning file AN 0707. As part of that annexation, there was an annexation agreement which included a fee of $3,500 for each lot. There was a condition of approval that was amended in the staff report. Should be the last condition of approval, just giving a notice of that fee. So it's not created with this subdivision. We just wanted to move it forward from the prior approval. There was a exemption approved from the natural resource overlay district. The natural resource overlay district included this portion of the site. So the zone change. The property is zoned R 10, which is the default zoning designation for all properties within the low-density residential comprehensive plan designation. As you can see on the zoning map, the site is adjacent to R 6, R 10, R 8, and R 3.5. The low-density residential comprehensive plan designation includes, of course, R 10, R 8, and R 6. So the adjacent property that's R 3.5 is a higher comprehensive plan designation. The applicant has proposed to retain their existing comprehensive plan designation. The subdivision layout is shown on your screen. There are a couple of conditions of approval in your staff report. Pease Road is identified as neighborhood collector in our transportation system plan. Our code requires that all houses abutting neighborhood collectors orient towards the neighborhood collector. So the most architecturally significant facade of the home would face Pease Road for lots 7, 8, and 9. On lots 8 and 9, if the applicant also chooses to have a driveway from Pease Road, that driveway would have to be combined into a single driveway. The applicant is proposing to retain some of the trees on site. There are currently 17 trees on site. They're proposing to retain four of them. For the trees that are being removed, they'll have to install mitigational trees in accordance with chapter 1741 of our code. There was a traffic study that was done to review the development application. The applicant hired a consultant to complete the study and it was reviewed by John Replinger of Replinger and Associates, who is our city consultant. The traffic impacts are minimal. There's eight trips in the AM peak and 11 trips in the PM peak. And there were no intersections that were shown to not comply with our mobility standards or no significant safety issues or concerns. Now, I wanted to get into a little bit more detail about stormwater. It was brought up as a concern at the last meeting. So today we have our engineers from our development services department to talk to you a little bit more about what they have proposed and what our code is. So I'll bring up Todd Martinez and Gordon Monroe.
Good evening, I'm Todd Martinez, engineer at Public Works, City of Oregon City.
Gordon Monroe, I'm with Kennedy Jinx Consultants and I help the city with development services and review. So, stormwater.
We're going to start off talking about some of the stormwater effects from this proposed development, and then after this slide, we'd like to talk about some of the frontage improvements on Pease Road. Gordon will cover the stormwater.
What does the next slide look like?
Will you also be addressing the testimony that was given? That was my specific question from last time. We have, we had testimony rather compelling, or at least I felt it was compelling with regard to stormwater issues that didn't seem to be addressed in the report.
Kidwell?
Okay.
Okay. Can you back up so we can see the whole subdivision there? Okay. So if you look at this, and I'm going to use the pointer, so close your eyes, right there is where we're calling the southern, can you see that? There we go. That's where the southern discharge point is now, an existing one that goes into an open stream that goes this way. And there's concern about potential impact to this homeowner. So right now, if you look at this site, and when it's totally unimproved, all the stormwater from this site goes right there. There is an existing catch basin here and everything flows down essentially to that and then goes into that drainage.
This is the existing system in this slide. The green lines represent existing storm pipe conveyance and the green dots are the manholes. The green squares that Gordon's pointing to, those are the catch basins.
So right now, I'll go back.
Could you not change that just yet? I'm sorry, it's just way too close. I cannot even see.
Okay, go back.
I know, but I can't see where he's pointing with the laser print, so I'm not going to say anything. I just can't see where he was pointing.
Okay, so those two are catch basins. That line is a pipe and that's the outfall point. And so this whole site right now, in the undeveloped condition, goes down to that open drainage. Go back so I can see the whole subdivision. There we go. So everything right now goes down to that drainage. The proposal is that the storm runoff from about two-thirds of this subdivision, so lots 1 through 6 and 11 and 10, will actually be diverted and go down to the existing stormwater system in Pavilion Park 1. And the only stormwater from this subdivision that will be going down to that existing drainage is from lots 7, 8, and 9, so about a third of the subdivision. So one of the things that happens in development is, you know, when you have development, you have more impervious area and the stormwater moves faster. So even though we have less lots here, it's going to go faster into here. Now, the proposal is that we will review the data that the applicant is providing us to determine if there is less stormwater going there after the development than there is before. If there's not, then what we're requiring is that they do mitigating improvements. They have also already suggested that on lots 7, 8, and 9, that they're going to do soakage trenches. Essentially, what that is, is taking all the runoff that comes from your house, from the roof, and instead of going directly to the street, you go down into the ground. And so that essentially is acting as detention and mitigating the flow and that's going down to that storage.
Is that like a French drain?
Yes. It is. It's a pipe in the ground or sometimes it's just gravel and you put your water in there and it's supposed to seep down into the ground. Usually has an overflow, so if you put too much in there, then it goes to the street. So that's part of their mitigation and we will evaluate a storm drainage study that's done as part of the final design and determine if there's any other mitigation that needs to happen so that there is no additional storm drainage that's going to that natural channel.
Will this be designed to certain year, number of year flood event, like a 25-year rain event or 50-year or?
There are requirements in the city code that they look at certain storm events. I think it's 2, 25, and 100.
So what you're saying is that you'll do this study after we've already decided whether to approve this or not, so we're kind of approving something without knowing what the actual situation's going to be?
What we have, the data that we have right now suggests that two-thirds of the storm drainage is going to be taken away from this site and it will go to a different location that already has detention on it and it will be moving away from that southern outfall.
So suggests is different than will, to me.
Well, no, it will.
It's kind of like the word essentially earlier.
The design is for two-thirds of it to go to a different location. Where that big arrow is, right there, pipe comes down, comes down, goes to this detention, bypasses totally this open.
Isn't that where that water normally flows at this point?
No.
It doesn't?
No. Normally, it flows down to this catch basin and into that system. So they will be diverting two-thirds of the subdivision.
Of what's currently going there, two-thirds would be diverted?
Two-thirds will be diverted. And then one-third will be going there. They have already suggested, they, well, already said that they will be doing soakage trenches, so that will mitigate for the storm drainage that's coming off of the roofs.
But not the actual street.
But not from the street. And they will be submitting data that will either show that because they have diverted two-thirds of it, that the flow is now less, or if it's not, then we are requiring them to build additional improvements such as detention, LID improvements, which is low impact development, or mitigation across the property itself.
When you say submitting data, I mean, we've had a pretty dry winter here. It's a, we're, when is that, two years out, three years out?
That's during design. It doesn't matter what our actual rainfall is. What they're going to look at is a study that says, here's the normal rainfall under a two-year event, under a 25-year event, under a 100-year event, and what are the impacts of that on this system? So it doesn't require that there's actual rainfall going on to do that analysis.
And if they can do that now without the actual rainfall, how come that can't be done before we decide to approve or deny that? Why couldn't it have been done as part of this application? I'm just asking because I don't know.
They are in process now, is all I can say.
Okay.
Is that going to help out the neighboring property owner that testified before us that she gets nothing but runoff from this piece of property? Because I think that's the issue before.
Yeah, the, the idea is that the stormwater flow to that point will be either the same or less than it is now.
The same said she said was flooding and causing quite a bit of problems and mosquitoes and bugs during the spring and summer months.
That's, that issue is separate from the subdivision.
Yet that does impact it.
It is kind of related, though.
Yeah.
It's related, but what, what we're saying is that the impact from the subdivision will not make the matters worse.
Based on what you're proposing?
Based on, yes. Based on what they've proposed and the study and improvements that we have put in the conditions of approval.
So the condition of approval will state that the, the projected runoff from the site to that particular adjacent property will be no greater than what is existing?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could add, if it gives the commission any greater comfort, it's, we're talking about condition number 28.
28.
And we could, could delete the last sentence deferring this determination to city staff and instead review the updated storm drainage report through a type 2 procedure, thereby allowing neighbors an opportunity to comment and potentially appeal that decision to the planning commission for further review.
I think that's fine, but I would like to have included in that report the adequacy or inadequacies of any of the other storm drain designs on other approved subdivisions so that if there are issues that were related to the older subdivisions, that this subdivision can pick up those and fix them. Because if there's water already falling out onto the other properties and, and, you know, stormwater wasn't dealt with in the other subdivisions, then I think this is the time to deal with that.
You're talking about water upstream coming to this site?
Correct, yeah.
I guess I would have a little bit of a concern there in that they're not even putting, you know, if it's the upstream detention facility, you know, that was, that was built to the design standards that were in place whenever those subdivisions may have been built. you know, that was built to the design standards that were in place, whenever those subdivisions may have been built and those have changed over time. They're proposing to deal with their stormwater through this plan, and so to make the connection that they need to go fix something else that they're not contributing to or didn't create, I think that really does fall back to the city when we took over that storm pond ourself and approved those subdivisions that put the water into those.
Aren't the adjacent properties, the subdivision, by the same person that's like now number two?
Not the upstream part, it's across the street.
Street, okay, I just was clarifying that.
Right, and I would agree with Tony to place a burden on this applicant for upstream flow from an entirely different development is really not a fair condition on this application.
Okay, but one thing is that the data's not in yet, and so if the data shows something different, then what are they going to do to mitigate that if it hasn't changed it?
We're talking about two different things, we're talking about existing flow that's already coming versus what the change of this development does to affect the drainage on this site.
Isn't that the same kind of how that water's going to impact it?
You have existing water coming from another site, but this site, this application has nothing to do with. What we're talking about here is what effect does this development have on the drainage of this site?
And that's what I'm referring to, so then what good is the data, I mean, where's that going to come from? Isn't that in reference to the water that should, that could possibly drain into that area? And they're going to say by the data that the water's actually going elsewhere? Am I missing something?
I think so, we're talking about.
They're doing a data report on where the water's going to go to show that two-thirds of it is going to another drainage, and I'm wondering if that's not necessarily the case and the data comes in differently and it's still going and impacting that or increasing it?
Right, what Paul was referring to is detention sites that are not on this property upstream that flow to this property.
And I'm aware of that from the last time, I was just thinking that still you put a lot of impervious surfaces in and water still flows more.
But this application should stand on its own.
And I'm aware that there's no legal nexus for us to require this subdivision to fix any of the inadequacies of other storm drain systems, but I think that it's probably something we all need to think about when we're looking at these developments. And instead of kicking the can down the road and turning the stormwater and letting the poor, you know, downstream property owner receive all that water, you know, maybe there needs to be some sort of policy review of stormwater to see if we're looking at this adequately.
In a sense, you know what you're.
That's all I'm saying.
In a sense, what you're saying, the same thing I was thinking about, they require sidewalks for new divisions and that's something that wasn't there before, so we want to improve it while you were doing this, so you have to put in sidewalks, so why not improve some of the stormwater runoff? That's what I was getting at.
I think the point in that comparison, though, is that typically we don't require them to go off-site to build sidewalks.
Okay.
They can build sidewalks on their own. The other thing about this basin is, we're looking at three ponds that were built as a result of developers' actions over the years. So, yeah, you know, there is some argument to be made that that waterway may have historically received a lot more water than it does today because over the years, we've had detention requirements that have reduced that. Now, that's not to say that the current owner or the current resident that lives there doesn't notice, you know, it's a real flashy little stream. I'm sure when it rains, it gets flashy and people, you know, see that as problematic. Some of the other issues with, that I heard just this time, I was, I missed the last time this topic came before the planning commission, but, you know, things like mosquitoes or maybe, you know, I don't know what the other, I heard that one, you know, there's not much we can ask this developer to do to remedy that. That's not to say that something downstream couldn't happen to kind of help that water from pooling as much as maybe it does, but.
Vector controlling.
Yeah. But I guess my point here, before I close, is the upstream developments in this neighborhood have done a fair amount of detention and this whole diversion of the development in the Phase One that's being kind of added to with Phase Two, I mean, we over, the developer overbuilt that pond that's down on McCord to accommodate, you know, this full build-out of this system, and so that was the intent, and I think, I just want to make sure that's understood.
And I wasn't suggesting that they go change somebody else's property, I keep thinking when you build new homes, you typically try to divert some of that water flow, and I know they're diverting two-thirds of it, but I don't have a lot here, it's right here in front of me, but the lots like seven, six, and five, I thought, well, maybe they might do something with those to plate something that would divert it over to the other area where the other two-thirds are going.
Seven, eight, and nine?
Well, you got, seven, six, and five, the water's coming down through there, seven and six, that will, why couldn't that be connected over to divert with the other two-thirds to eliminate that big water flow through there? Is it going to go under the house, under six?
He said elevation.
Elevations, the reason that they can't get over there.
And I'm just asking on these questions.
It's called gravity, isn't it? Yeah, it's hard to get the water to flow uphill.
Otherwise, they probably would have.
Okay.
They're diverting as much as they can.
Okay.
So, I'm pretty sure you understand, some of our concern is that I think we have a responsibility to make sure that there is no more water going onto this property and the evidence that we've heard in testimony indicated that, right now, unimproved, it's just wishing through there. So, to go back to what one of the other commissioners said with, and what you said, with more impervious surface that isn't there currently, you know, the layperson is going to think, okay, more surface for water to go across, that means more water may be coming their way. So, you're saying two-thirds, I would love somehow to see that there isn't any additional water being imposed on them. So, I mean, one of the suggestions is that some of the things in the condition, they really should say shall instead of will.
Well, you know. The intent is that no additional water will go.
And it would be nice if it was less water than they get now, because again, it's all rural there now, and.
I think Carrie's.
Sort of, could you just maybe walk through real quick what the design standards are for, do you have that with you? The detention requirement?
I don't have that memorized.
I wouldn't either, so.
Well, I do think Carrie's suggestion to modify condition 28 is a good idea.
Yeah, I like that.
Because it does allow a review of that system prior to the actual approval.
Yeah, and I wish they were, oh, she is here tonight, so I'll be interested to hear what she has to say.
Well, and I guess just to kind of summarize, the current proposed design is quote "zero impact", so as far as anything additional. If there is something additional, if the numbers show that there is going to be an increase, then something like what Commissioner Espy was saying does kick in, which is the impact on the nearest intersection on a street situation. If you, you know, you're the last developer to build something and your car is the one that means you have to improve the intersection, then you're the one who has to improve it. So, if he can engineer down the water, then he's going to have to be the one who improves the stormwater system.
And that is what condition of approval 28 says.
Right, and I just want to be clear that that's already in place, some protection for that is in place. We can't force him to make it less than zero, but we can say if it's point 001, there will be an impact and you have to do something, so.
Yes.
Okay, why don't you continue with your presentation now that we've interrupted you?
Are we done with stormwater?
Any more questions?
We're never done with stormwater.
Okay. We're never done.
Well, no, I do think that that was one of the primary concerns that we had from the last hearing.
Just real quick, John, the two-thirds that's being diverted is going to a detention facility that can handle the two-thirds.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, we just kicked it down to the next development.
For the benefit of the commission, the overbuilt detention pond is at the lower center of the screen there, that's the facility that will receive all of.
This pipe comes down and goes to that detention facility that was designed.
To handle all of the.
To handle that flow.
This application.
Why is it blue like that? It's weird.
One other question, does, does the change from R, is it R10 now?
Yes.
To R6 have any implication or effect on water runoff? Less houses, but you still got the same street design?
You still have a 53-foot, right, the street design is exactly the same.
Okay, but you have less runoff from the roofs and stuff like that, but that's going to be taken care of by.
Soakage trenches.
Another type of.
Three lots that are.
Okay, so you're not looking at any difference in the impact there?
Continue.
This slide is showing a shadow plat of the application, the proposed subdivision over the existing conditions. The road, which I believe is going to be called Pavilion Place, is a T-intersection with Pease Road, the center line of which is approximately the separation between those two properties across Pease Road, 19395 and 1941, I believe, is the other address, or 941. The frontage along Pease Road will match the adjacent development of Pavilion Park One, that is, there'll be a curb sidewalk, there'll be a 19-foot improvement on Pease Road plus a bike lane, travel lane, and landscaping, in addition to streetlights. That's really all this illustration is, to show really the proximity of the street to other features, existing features.
So, it looks like the overlay of the right-of-way differs substantially to where the pavement is.
Existing gravel.
Existing pavement.
Existing gravel road that goes into the site, yeah.
No, I meant Pease Road.
Oh, Pease Road.
Where you're showing the right-of-way of that, and then I'm looking at that.
So, the bold line is curb, right? Curb line, so everything behind that would be sidewalks, planar strips.
So, yes, this is the right-of-way line here.
Yeah, I'm looking at it across the street.
It's always been that way.
This is the new road here. This is the frontage for lots seven, eight, and nine, right here.
So, where's the center line?
The line of the new road is right here.
No, center line of Pease, as you're showing, is that it, right there, the dash line?
Yeah, maybe it's steady.
Yeah, that line. And then.
Essentially, the curb line on Pease Road will match what's already there up at the top end. It'll just come straight down, matching the same curb line.
Yeah, everything to the north, so where the little, all the other subdivision that's north on their same side of the road is going to be extended further to the south on Pease Road.
This overlay may not be precise because I noticed that, looking at, I mean, like, exact precise, it's a good representation because if you look at where the Pease Road center line is at the very top of the picture, it's right on the yellow line, but by the time you get to the bottom, it's shifted off the, because.
Commissioner, there is a little bit of difference in the striping the way it is now, and I'll mention that since you noticed the difference in the striping on the center line. This development here has the off-street parking on, this would be the southeast side of Pease Road. As you transition down to this development here, the proposed one, the parking is on this side of Pease Road. To accommodate that, the center line striping is going to make it a little bit of a jog as it transitions from here to here.
It already makes that jog.
And then further up, it makes another jog, and then another couple of blocks, it makes another jog.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The joys of urban-rural interface.
So, I drove there today to take a look at this, and, I mean, there's some great homes out there, I had no idea how beautiful some of the places were. It's a nice area, and I did a lot of thinking about the fact that I live off Holcomb Boulevard. And on Holcomb, as they improved new areas up there, Trail View and some of the other ones, Barlow Crest, they did not allow any cars, no driveways to face a road, and I thought, I saw all that development, I thought, Pease Road is going to get busier and busier with all that development out there. And to have two driveways here on lots seven, eight, and nine backing out to the Pease Road, to me, is really disruptive. And with the new transportation plans we're looking at, I'm still, as I said the last time, really uncomfortable with driveways that back out onto a road, not a street, but a road, and I suggested that maybe they put a, between one and 10, I think it is there, if I can see it, a side road going up into those driveways, maybe eight had its own and one had its own coming off the street here, but something else other than backing out onto a Pease Road. Because as I said, I was out there today, it was quite busy, I wanted to go up and down, I had to turn around and go side streets because I just couldn't turn around with the traffic that was on there. And the more development that takes place out there, it's going to be a busier road. So, again, I'm still uncomfortable with driveways that go out onto the main road.
Our municipal code encourages us to interact more with the street with our current code.
With the homes, but the driveways? That's not interacting, that's blocking traffic.
Pease is a neighborhood collector in our current transportation system plan.
So, Holcomb is a neighborhood collector, too?
Holcomb's a larger classification.
Because they seem similar when I drove it today.
They're not, they're not. On Holcomb, you also have topography issues and curves, and the code's changed quite a bit since a lot of that was built up there.
And we do have a condition of approval to combine driveway eight, nine, so there's limited driveways as well.
Say that again.
We have a proposed condition of approval to combine the driveways on lot eight and lot nine, so if they would like a driveway on lot eight facing Pease Road, it will have to be combined with the driveway for lot nine. The alternative would be to have one driveway on lot nine and then the driveway for lot eight to come off that side street.
Because seven isn't going out, right, seven is coming off that street there, right?
They can choose either way, if the house faces Pease Road, they can have sort of like a side-oriented garage or garage in the back of the house.
So, the developer has the option of putting the driveways for seven and eight onto that new road?
They do.
Can we make that a condition of approval by controlling traffic onto Pease Road on those lots? Is that?
Sure.
We have heard the testimony from people how hard it is to back out onto Pease Road already, and I keep thinking this is a few more homes that, backing out in the same area that they're backing out.
So, our code encourages driveways to, again, create a greater sense of community and to interact more with the street. So, not only are you facing your front door, but it's not going to be a fake front door, you're actually interacting with the street with the driveway, and so we like to leave that option open, so it's being used. And when you're driving, it's not that bowling alley effect of fences and.
We actually have a home up there that was built just a few years ago that they have a back door and a front door that look the same, but they blocked off all the access onto Holcomb there, and there was one that used to have an access and they put a fence there. They said, sorry, you have to go around the back and come in that way. And I saw that in the last Pacific Heights homes that they did. They said, sorry, you have a front door that faces it, but your driveway has to be behind to stop that from you from backing out onto Holcomb, again.
Well, it sounds like the developer has the option of going either way.
The option, but that doesn't make me comfortable about Pease Road being busier as more development comes through.
There are also no concerns in our transportation study regarding that issue either.
It's not real.
Continue.
I believe that's the last of our slides.
If you could slide to the next one.
Laura's coming back up, okay.
If you could page one more, we just want to show you our approval criteria. So, in the staff report, you saw.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
All of our standards with the approval criteria for stormwater, driveways, things like that. And then with that, we just wanted to recommend approval of the staff, wanted to recommend that you would recommend to the city commission approval of the subdivision and zone change. The two, we had a revised staff report with the two conditions of approval. One is more of a notice of that police fee, which was a requirement from the prior annexation, and the second one is that revised condition of approval allowing us to make sure that their stormwater complies with our stormwater standards.
And just, your recommendation is to change it to not just city, but type-two city?
We could notice. We could notice that stormwater report to neighbors within three hundred feet with a two-week public comment period similar to what we do for subdivisions.
Right.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Any other questions for staff?
Um, I guess I do, the police fee, why don't you explain how that?
The subject site was annexed in two thousand and eight as a part of annexation oh seven oh seven. With that annexation, there was an annexation agreement. And the annexation agreement essentially said that when development occurs, for each lot that's being developed at time of building permit, a fee of three thousand five hundred dollars would be submitted to the city to pay for police coverage of that lot. So in the annexation file, it was a way to show that they met the standards for adequate police protection. So the condition of approval just is a notice to everyone, if, if any of the lots gets sold or if any of the property owners wanna see the staff report, they would know upfront that there is that fee from the agreement.
And that thirty-five hundred dollar figure came from some table of an ordinance that was approved by the city? Or was it spontaneously generated by the, uh, annexe?
It doesn't matter at this point, it was a condition of approval that we're carrying forward, is probably the annexation.
I know, but I still wanna get on record that I think it's blackmail. But, go ahead.
Okay, uh, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Come on down, Rick.
For the record, Rick Givens, planning consultant for the applicant, and Bruce Goldson, data engineering. And I'd like to point out that the planning consultant on the prior application hadn't been quite so long-winded, we wouldn't be so late getting to my testimony, but inasmuch as that's the case, I'll dive right in. I think the biggest issue, which you've already spent a considerable amount of time on, is storm drainage. So I'm gonna let Bruce Goldson talk about that a little bit, and then I'll get into my part of it.
For the record, my name is Bruce Goldson with data engineering. I did submit some information to, uh, city staff on the eighteenth concerning a, a report that I did for the storm. And I don't know that that showed up in your packet. And I think it's still under review with them, but basically what happened was, I reviewed the two-year storm, both post and pre. And in the precondition, the entire site, the two-point-two acres drains, as previously testified, out that drainage way to the, we'll call it the west. The entire site goes that way. And in the, for instance, in, in the two-year event, in the precondition, I've calculated that point nine five CFS goes, goes to that location. In the post-condition, basically, all of lots seven, eight, nine, and a little strip of Pease Road that we're developing would be part of this development, would go out that direction. And when you use the calculations to that, I get point two-six CFS, or about twenty-eight percent of the original flow then would flow out there, so significantly less. I also ran a calculation for twenty-five years just to demonstrate the same, that it demonstrated the same relationship, and it does. It's, uh, at the twenty-five-year event, you get one point six CFS in the pre and point four-six in the post. So it's about, in that case, twenty-nine percent, but I think it's just a rounding factor when you get to there. I've submitted this to the city, and I don't think they've had a chance to review it completely. But I think we're on target for them to agree in the general principles. Whether the numbers come out a little different, that could happen, but I think that the result is going to be that most of the water, stormwater, from the, from the proposed subdivision will go out the other direction to the existing detention pond. In the original analysis, I reviewed the original storm report when Pavilion Park was done. They used the entire site going to that site, so it's actually, that pond's actually oversized down below to accommodate it. I don't think they looked in depth of, you couldn't quite get all the water to go that way. As a result, a portion of it has to go this way. And in fact, the origin drainage law simply states that we, we can't shut off all that water if we wanted to, because it's, I believe that you would have to allow some of that water to go there, no matter what. Because they could say, "I need that water, I want it," they could say that. They may not want it, but I don't think you could, you, you would be wrong in saying, "Yeah, shut off the entire flow that direction." The storm, the storm, the city's storm, uh, criteria is basically two to one-half the two. These are storm events, so they're saying that, uh, the two-year post-development, you reduce it to one-half of the, uh, pre-developed rate.
Can we, maybe, maybe we should talk about what that means exactly? The two-year event meaning a storm that would be expected to occur a frequency of once every two years.
Right, okay, excuse me. And so typically, you run through those same scenarios, five against the five-year event, and I think it's ten against the twenty-five-year event, for detention factors. You look at the hundred-year event for conveyance, not for detention, because the chances of a hundred-year event, everybody gets wet at that point, you know, everybody's wet. Uh, because most of the storm systems in the city are only designed through the twenty-five-year event anyway. That's, that's the criteria that's used. So you would look at a hundred-year event for conveyance to see what happens, but the design is really to the twenty-five-year event. So it's, it's a little strange that, that council here is suggesting that we go to a type-two review for, for the storm report. I've really not experienced that here in any other jurisdiction, because that's typically a, um, a staff, staff reviews that, staffs, professional, uh, people that deal with stormwater reviews those reports. And having a review sent out to the public seems, uh, you know, what we gain by that. I think, and if you've got some questions about the storm, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you say seven, eight, and nine will still drain that direction?
Yeah, I guess.
I thought I saw on the, or previous map that somebody had up there, that that whole section over there was gonna drain down. Eight, nine, eleven, and ten.
Lots one through six and eleven and ten would all drain to the southwest, to the detention pond in the Pavilion Park One.
One through six, and which ones?
Eleven, ten.
Okay.
And one through six, and the road that's between them.
We looked, I went out and measured the, uh, the man, the stormant hole out there that exists in the, in the eyebrow there. And it just is not deep enough to allow the entire subdivision to go in that direction. I went out and checked that here in the interim here from the past meeting, and it just will not happen.
In your presentation, I had one question, and that was, those calculations that you came up with, did that include the infiltration that you've designed in, or is that a greater?
That's greater than.
Okay, so the actual result would be that the amount of water.
It's gonna be even less.
Even less than what your calculations.
Right, I didn't, I did not include any infiltration in the, in the calculation. I just wanted to see the raw data, to see what kind of information that we got, uh, that would impact the downstream eber.
I guess I, I would agree in that this is pretty straightforward, uh, exercise that we're going through here with regard to stormwater. I, I have not come to a lot of planning commission meetings, so I don't, I haven't been through this process much. But I am a little surprised at, at kind of this, we're gonna, we're gonna wanna duke it out with these guys here and make sure we get their stormwater controlled in the proper manner. And, uh, it may not be much, it sounds like it's not gonna be much of a, a fight, because they're interested in doing the right thing as well. So I, I guess I'm, uh, the stormwater management that's happened in the previous development was well-managed and is working fine. Um, you know, I get that change raises concerns from nearby residents, but in this case, it seems pretty straightforward. We're talking about, uh, some pro, um, proven project technology with infiltration trenches. We're talking, we've got the option of detention, got the option of water quality. There's, there's plenty of tools for us to choose from to solve this problem. So I, I guess, you know, it's, it's up, up to the planning commission to add conditions as they see required. But, but this one here is pretty straightforward from, from an engineering perspective.
I think the city attorney was under the impression that the study hadn't been done yet. It is, has been done, and it's in the record, the city attorney, uh, city engineers simply haven't completed the review. But we're designing against standard engineering criterion, and it's a very straightforward thing. It's just like any other, uh, criterion that is in your code that have to meet from an engineering design standpoint that are reviewed in the construction plans. You've got a condition of approval that says we can't exceed the amount of flow that's going there. They know that, we know that, and it's a matter of engineering from that standpoint.
We're, we're just trying to figure out, being non-technical people.
I understand.
How to translate that into, there isn't gonna be any more water on the adjoining property when we've had specific and compelling testimony. My, my gripe over the years with transportation, storm, and water is that we have the numbers, which we can do on paper. How do we translate that information, a two-year event, a five-year event, a hundred-year event, when we know in Oregon City we've had more than our share of a hundred-year flood? And that's all been calculated on paper, but what, how do we, here's my, my dilemma. How do we translate that information into what actually happens in reality? If you were out there during an incident and you were doing your calculations because you actually saw what was happening on the ground versus what's happening on paper, that would give me more comfort.
Well, it's hard to schedule those storm events.
Right, I know, but I mean, when, when you, when you've got somebody that's telling you that they have water.
The fact is.
So that's, see, see where I'm coming from?
I, I see where you're coming from.
And we're not, and we're not technical experts. So we're trying to balance the technical side with the reality. It's the same way with traffic.
I think what we're saying is that staff has recommended a condition of approval that says we can't increase the amount of water going in that direction. We're willing to accept that condition and design, using standard engineering protocols that we know and that they know to demonstrate that that will be the case. I'm not sure what's gained by a type-two review at this point.
Well, we'll let, we'll listen to the rest of the testimony, and then we'll make our minds up.
The thing I would, the thing I would like to make.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I, I, I think that, uh, the only thing, uh, I, I agree with what I'm hearing from the applicant. I, I do think that the, the terminology that I see in condition number twenty-eight doesn't specifically say that the, uh, at the end of the development, that the flow will not exceed the current flow.
As I understood, staff is recommending some changes to condition.
Yeah, so I, I, I think if, if that, if that language were included in, uh, number twenty-eight, I would be fine approving it without the type-two review if it specifically said that.
We, we have no problem with changing the condition to read that one.
Yeah, the result of the design would not exceed the current flow.
And the point I just would make too, since our data is in the record, anybody who wants to appeal it has the, has the information available and could appeal on those grounds.
Well, and it's gonna go to the city commission for final approval.
It will, because we're doing the.
Another opportunity to.
That's right.
Exactly. I'd just like to make one point, is that since Pavilion One has come onto the scene, there's been no development along Pease Road that, that influences this current drainage. Any perception that the water may be greater or less is probably a perception, because it's, it hasn't changed. There's been no development that affects this drainage that I'm aware of, up, up from that detention facility that's up to the north, uh, what's it, northwest, I guess. Uh, there's been no development. The site has drained there, continues to drain there. This vacant site and, and the stormwater that contributes to the drainage way from above has, has received no development in probably the last five or more years.
We have global warming.
Planet change.
Yeah, let's get the right terminology there.
Yeah.
Uh, turning, turning from, if you're ready to turn from storm drainage, I think we beat it about as hard as we can.
Oh, no, we can do it more, you know.
Well, if you'd like, we.
But you, please continue.
Don't encourage us.
Yes, don't encourage us.
Okay. On the driveway issue from, for lots seven, eight, and nine, our intent is to take lots seven and eight from Pavilion Place, the driveway approaches, and we have no objection to making that a condition of approval. Lot nine will access with a driveway to the Peace Road, but we would know there's already one driveway at that location anyway that serves the existing house. So we're not adding anything new, we're just replacing it with a different house. So the, there's no real change in circumstances to what's going on there.
But can I ask, nine does not sit, the current house does not sit right where nine is, isn't it a little further in? So they can turn around inside to come out instead of backing out?
Yeah, it's back further from the road, the driveway's about at the same location.
Do all those homes, uh, just kind of to the right of it, that property, where do all their driveways go?
They all will back out onto Peace Road.
Do they really?
Well, they're, most of them are vacant still at this point, are under construction, but yeah, they will.
Yeah, see, that's like, not good.
There's some, uh, properties across Pease Road that back out too.
The ones median crosses do, yeah.
Just as I drove it today, I was just thinking, wow, heavy traffic.
We've tried to design this to comply with the city's criteria for, you know, taking, orienting homes towards Peace Road. You know, that's, that's the policy directive we've been given by the city, and that's what we did in designing the, and if the planning commission wants to change those policies, I, I personally wouldn't object to it. But, uh, we'd have to deal with what's in place, and we've designed in a manner that complies with city code. At the last hearing, there was some discussion about the zoning itself, you know, whether or not we had demonstrated that R six was in fact the appropriate zoning. I don't know, does the planning commission wanna get into that again? I'd be happy to, I've got some more information to provide if you'd like to talk about it. Are you happy with R six at this point?
I, I was curious if you, if you.
You asked the question, is that your call?
Yes, I did ask a question, I was curious if you'd followed up to evaluate what the impact of a, uh, R eight would be on the site.
Am I right, stack of papers here? Give you some, I did both R ten and R eight.
While you're looking for that, the handout that we got on the water resources thing, it looks like there's three pages that are exactly the same, without a continuation of the rest of it. There's three pages that say, "Dear Mark, dear Mark."
That's our staff.
Yes, "Oh, dear."
Yeah, we got three copies of the same letter.
They were trying, they were trying to make a point. That's a shadow letter.
I apologize for that.
That's okay, I figured there must have been something going on with the, with the copier.
Yeah.
It's all, it's, it's the copier's fault.
Human error there, um, that was just, uh, you had asked about the previous natural resource overlay exemption. Um, so that was just the staff report. Perfect. So the applicant's entered a few items into the record. One is the update of stormwater from the original subdivision application, and then a couple of maps as well, which I'll look up for you.
Um.
Can we share?
We can share.
Are these the same?
We have to share with him.
I think they are. Okay, I'll take one, you have one.
Oh, no, this is R ten versus R six.
Oh, boy, are we. Are we quick on that?
We got this plan, a little bigger one than what you've got, showing R ten, and basically, we're down to seven lots. R eight. We're at eight lots. Just doesn't work very well.
Did you wanna show it on the screen, in that file?
I can try. Let's see, you said it was in that folder that was.
Yeah, exit or bring that down?
Bring that down and go over to the other folder.
Right in the middle of the screen.
That one there. That one there. Mm-hmm. Okay.
It's R ten.
Ooh, that's the exploded version.
Yeah. This is the R ten. Note that lot sizes vary, which is allowed by code, but essentially, what I was trying to make in our last hearing is that this neighborhood is part of the same neighborhood to the northeast. This is Pavilion One. I'll pass around this photo that I took today that shows the homes being built at the end of this street and how-
Here you go. Okay.
You know, there's small lots, single-family homes, and as you're driving down that street, suddenly you would be going to lots of, you know, roughly three times the size, and you got to build considerably larger homes because of the value of those lots. This doesn't, to me, make a lot of sense as a land planner. Um, under the R eight plan. Essentially, you're same situation, we've got lots that vary from seventy-three hundred square feet up to nine, there's, because of the fact we've got this easement here, we can't really spread them out in any other way, so it kind of works out that you only get one more lot, and lot eight is kind of a screwy lot. Um, so essentially, you've got the same issue. It just doesn't make sense from a standpoint of neighborhood cohesiveness. You're coming down here, you've got a lot of small lots, single-family home, and suddenly you're into a, just next house next door is on a much bigger lot, and I can see the argument where you're, you're looking at an area, if this were being developed as a cul-de-sac, say, and you didn't have a connection, maybe you can make a, a change there, but the logical thing to me is to make the change at the point where this development, you know, has become separate from, you know, over here. When those lots come in and are, are developed in our ten densities, that might make some sense. Um, we've got the zoning map here that shows the site relative to, I guess I could put that up there too, can I, Laura?
It's already on, it's up there. Well, Rick's looking for that. When I went back and looked at the storm report, there was a shadow plot in there that used basically the design we're using today, an R six layout, that they used to calculate the, uh, the storm drainage that, that they've sized upon for with Pavilion One. So, there, the city was well aware of and accepted at that point, that, uh, concept that this would be R six.
Not, not exactly.
Well-
A sha-, a shadow plot doesn't give you approval for anything, so I don't, I don't want to argue, but I just, please don't tell the planning commission that that was-
Right.
-a given, because I don't think it was.
It was a given that we were, it was designed to accommodate that, I guess is what we would say.
That's much better.
Okay, uh, looking at the zoning, we've got R six development immediately to the southeast. We've got R three-point-five median density residential development immediately to the northeast, and across the street, we've got Hart Eight. This is, this piece over here and this, same situation, they were brought in at R ten and they simply haven't applied for their zone change to R eight because they haven't got, gone through a development process, and default's R ten. Um, went back and looked through the comprehensive plan to talk about policies that are, give guidance as to what should be adopted, way of zoning. As you all, probably all know, the low-density residential plan category provides for R six, R eight, and R ten zoning within that planned designation. The subject property is designated low-density residential. It could have, per the comprehensive plan, any of those zoning designations applied to it and be in conformance with the basic land use designation. But the plan has policies that are meant to give guidance to the planning commission in deciding which of those are appropriate. Um, looked at policy two-point-four-point-four, it says where environmental constraints reduce the amount of buildable land and/or where adjacent land differs in uses or density, implement comprehensive plan and zoning designations that encourage compatible transitional uses. Well, there's no environmental constraints to this property. It does however, abut, much higher density zoning district, and this plan policy says you should have a transition. That is, you should step down, not go to your lowest density. Seems to me is consistent with that plan policy. Policy ten-point-one-point-one says, maintain existing residential housing stock and establish older neighborhoods by maintaining existing comprehensive plan and zoning designation where appropriate. In other words, if we were coming into a, a development area that we had already had a commitment to development at a much lower density, everything around it was R ten, planning commission would be within reasonable rights to say, it makes no sense to go in and take this one area and upzone it to R six. That's not the case here. Everything in this area is new development, and there's consistent zoning with R six, and higher density here, it's reasonable to look at going to a higher density in this location. Policy ten-point-one-point-three says designate residential land for a balanced variety of densities and types of housing, such as single-family attached, detached, and arranged or multifamily densities and types, including mixed-use development. That doesn't really give you a whole lot of guidance as to what to do in this particular instance, um, but we would note that if you look at the city's zoning map overall, I don't have that, I don't believe with me, um, R six is probably much less percentage-wise than not a land that the city has available for residential development than R eight and R ten for low-density. Providing for this change would increase the opportunities for more variety of housing types and densities. And finally, the one that probably is most compelling is it says that, under fourteen-point-three-point-one, it says maximize new public facilities and services by encouraging new development within the urban block boundary and maximum densities allowed by the comprehensive plan. So, this is a situation where you saw there are existing utilities that have been input in across the site that were put in to allow for development. You'll notice that the three different density arrangements all make use of that existing layout of the utilities. R six clearly makes the most efficient use area in terms of allowing for the most, most density of development based on the existing infrastructure in place. So, for all of those reasons, we think that the comprehensive plan points to R six being the most reasonable thing, just from neighborhood cohesiveness standpoint, it makes sense to make the transition at the point where a neighborhood completes rather than in mid-block. So, for all those reasons, we ask that you would allow us to continue this project as R six is consistent with what was happening in Pavilion Park One, and we're just completing that in this location. Some comments in the last hearing too that talked about the history of what happened there, how we got the zoning we did. I don't know how relevant that is in your decision-making process, but I do have Icon compile the history of what, how zoning got in place there. If you'd like, I can put that into the record if you're not really interested, and I'll leave it out. Now, just to, we'll say that the applicant purchased this property already zoned, but R three-point-five, he did not apply for his own change. He had not, Icon did not own this property when they developed this property and bought it subsequently. So, the zoning was in place per the city's zone change that was done, I think in two thousand and four. Um, I think that concludes all the questions. Last time, or if you have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I'd take them now. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Uh, just, just to be clear for the record, you agree that it should be zero, uh, increase in emissions out of the, your subject site?
Runoff.
Runoff, yeah, sorry.
Emissions.
Yeah, much different, yes. You said that earlier, I just, it was a while ago, so I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now take public testimony for those who remain. First person, uh, signed to speak is Jeff Strohacker.
I'm Jeff Strohacker, and I live at nineteen-four-hundred Peas, where, where all the water comes. And I, I have a question, where they come up with these numbers on flow, because I've never seen any kind of gauge or any kind of meters put on that pipe. And the catch basin they talk about also, um, I've been living there for quite a few years, and I can go to that catch basin and it'd be dry as a bone, but I've got a thirty-inch pipe with probably eight inches of water flowing out of it. So, I don't know where they're coming up with these numbers. I kind of question that. So, it comes down, if they say they're not going to increase it, since there's nothing, no basis on any kind of a number to start with, and if it does increase, whose word is against who? And as it washes out my accessory building and my property down there, who do I go to next? As you probably remember, a few years ago, when they moved the pumping station up the street from us, they put a telephone pole through the sewer line, and we spent New Year's in eight inches of sewage in our basement. So, we're pretty used to being flooded out, and I just hope we're not going through this again, because, I don't know how else to put it. So, the, when I put, went through the, um, the permit process to build the accessory building, they held my feet to the fire on impervious material, I could not add anything within fifty feet of that, of the creek there. Now, why all of a sudden can somebody else, they can build right on top of it? I just kind of, kind of wonder why. So, that's, yeah, I think that's about all I've got to say. Any questions or? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, next person speaking is Linda Strohacker.
Hello, I'm Linda Strohacker, and I live on the property adjacent. And first I want to say about the traffic that is on Peace Road. It's very high traffic, and I've lived there seven years. I've married my husband and married onto his property. And the traffic is so much on Peace Road that I back into my driveway. And even then, as I back into the driveway so I can pull out frontwards, there's many days that I have to still wait quite a while, or cars are traveling so fast that I do have to exit cautiously. So, it is a very high traffic area, and getting out on Peace Road onto Leland, when I go to work about seven-thirty, I can wait up to five minutes to get out onto Leland. So, many times, right or wrong, I cut through Redway, which is through a residential area to get over to Leland and come to a four-way stop. It's just easier, and I'm sure they hate me for going through a residential area, but Peace Road is a very busy street for adding any more driveways at all, or any more cars at the size that the street is. And as far as the water going into my backyard, it has increased. It may be true that the piece of property right next to me hasn't increased it, because it's right, there's been no building, although the trees that were there have been taken down. They've been taken down since our last meeting. There's one fir tree left, and so I still don't think that-
Linda, could you stop for just a minute?
Yes.
So, the trees that are part of this application that hasn't been approved yet, you're saying that the trees that were indicated on the site plan have been removed?
I don't think the trees are there anymore.
Okay.
The ones at the far end of the property.
You mean, but since our last meeting, since the-
Since our last meeting.
Planning commission?
Okay, you used the word thick.
They could be right on the edge of that lot, or they could have been on the next edge, because where the property lines are. Um, how many, I think in the testimony earlier, it gave a number of like twelve or eighteen trees. There were so many tree talk today that I don't remember if it was the school had the trees or, but there's a fir tree left, and then there's some kind of like alder trees up against the existing house. But there is a large cedar tree and some kind of big trees at the back of the, what I think was that property? It could be the next lot, because I don't know the exact property line. It's just a big field. But as I was saying, the water has increased on our property. It's increased enough that it's washed away little, the little ditch area, it was all rocked in. The mosquitoes is always wet. The mosquitoes are bad there almost year-round. And it is true probably that this last piece of property, the last puzzle, the piece, is now got everybody looking at it, when a lot of the problems happen from the other developments, and some of it may be Icon on the other, the ones on the same side of the street with me, and some might be up by the other catch basins. I don't know where, but I don't know what to do about it, and the water is bad on my property. It's eroding the piece of property that sits higher where our accessory building is. It is so wet that we have a riding lawnmower, we can't mow close to that water area. It's right, it doesn't flow in a stream year-round, but it's always wet back there. My concern is, um, the water that is running off and coming through that covert pipe, what is in that water? Some days it stinks. It's probably just because it's stagnant, but I don't know that. Um, the pollution from driveways and roads is carrying oil, car pollution, people's pesticides on their grass. I don't use any pesticides in my house for my yard. I have animals, I have children that come play in my yard. I don't really, I'd rather have a dandelion than pesticides, and so I'm concerned about that.
Can you conclude your remarks? Your, your time's expired.
Anyway, so I am, I am concerned about making sure no more water comes, and what could I do if more water does come?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person, uh, speaking is Christine Kozinski.
Christine Kozinski, and I live in unincorporated Cockamis County. In my previous testimony of February twenty-fifth, I brought several concerns before the commission regarding this proposed land use. Some of these concerns were for an intermittent ditch on the property, questions about the fill, drainage and storm water retention, heavy development in the area, and most importantly, the mile of very large landslides which surround this area. While visiting with some friends last month who live in the area, we decided to do a site visit and drove around to many of the Central Point, McCord, Hazeldale, and Peace areas. What was most noticeable were the many wetlands and the high-water table. At the home of my friend, she showed me an area that is so wet, water sits on top of the soil as if the ground is fully saturated. She even showed me the imprint of her shoes in the ground where they had sunk into the soil. I remain concerned about the drainage in this entire area. Yes, there are several detention ponds to serve the homes. However, I was interested in the pond located on Kohler Street. As I note, it is only one block away from a huge landslide. Even though the detention pond will temporarily store the water, within a short period of time, the waters are discharged, and in the case with the Kohler Pond, the waters are being charged directly into the landslide. I would like to remind you that the number one ingredient to reactivate landslides is water. Again, in my previous testimony, I stated I have strong concerns for the heavy development taking place in the Central Point and Peace Road areas and their close proximity to the large chain of slides. Heavy development can radically change the previous natural drainage for those- for those areas which can have dramatic effects upon the slides. I mentioned to you that eventually, if heavy development continues, at some point, you will reach a tipping point or saturation level. In all the development that has taken place in these neighborhoods, the lands have been cleared of old trees and vegetation has been removed, taking the stability of the soil away. The remaining soil is then left with less tree roots to absorb the rainwater, resulting in further potential for slides. Again, in my previous testimony, I spoke of Oregon City's landslide regulations. And I asked that these overlay this entire district to bring safety measures to these people and their properties. I continue to encourage the city to seek a geological study of the very large chain of slides on Central Point Road, which do pose a serious threat, especially since they are unstable and in the same class of landslides as those found in New York Canyon and on Holly Lane. The Dogami susceptibility maps being released this coming May will help to guide the city with the type of geological landslide studies that should be done in this area where the city is proposing much more residential development. Thank you.
Thank you. With the, I have no other public comments with the applicant. I'd like to have a rebuttal.
Briefly. Director Rick Givens. I think we've got the Strohacker's message loud and clear, and staff has it as well. We understand their concerns about water. You know, I would point out that water has flowed down that drainage way for a long time. And there's a reason why the city has adopted policies that would no longer allow their house to be built where it's built, you know, in the riparian zone of a drainage way. But their house predates, it's not, wasn't in the city when it was built and predates all the city's ordinances. But that's, these kinds of issues are the kinds of things that the city of Oregon City and other cities in Oregon adopt rules to minimize these problems by prohibiting development in areas where they're developed. So I don't think there's anything anybody can do that's going to resolve all of their problems. They're just built too close to a creek, drainage way, excuse me. But we are willing to agree that we will accept a condition of approval that says we will not add any additional water to this situation. There's nothing we can do to resolve the other problems. And frankly, there's no testimony that would suggest that any of the issues they're having are necessarily beyond what the city's code would have allowed. I think everything upstream has been designed to city standards. It's just a matter of they've got, they're built too close to a drainage way. Regarding traffic, you know, I, I don't doubt that there are times when maybe you have trouble backing out there. But I was out there today and I, at three-thirty and four, and stood in the center of the road and took pictures for two or three minutes at a time without any traffic causing me to move. So my, my perception is that it's not quite as bad perhaps as, as some of the testimony suggested. And I would note that the traffic report was reviewed by the city's traffic consultant and that it demonstrated that it meets all of the applicable criteria. The issue of landslides brought up by Ms. Kozinski, I brought a map. The city's GIS system that shows the area of a old landslide that's the only one that would be affected by the drainage from this project, which comes down this way, goes under McCord Road, goes down through this drainage way. There is an area that potentially has had earth movement in the past. This is a buffer area identified by the city's overlay system. You'll note that we're a long ways.
And the detention system.
And the detention system is downstream here. So I, I, I understand her concerns, but I don't think there's anything that would suggest that there's any issues with developing the subject property that would cause any problems to that off-site landslide area that's probably a quarter mile away. Potential landslide area, I would note. The trees, there haven't been any trees cut on this site since the application was filed and to my knowledge, long before that. I don't know, there obviously are, you know, trees that have been cut in the past, especially with development up here. Maybe that's what she was seeing, but there's nothing been cut on this site.
Yeah, those are all new.
These are all new homes too. Again, there could have been some trees on this side of the line that were taken out. I'm not sure, but there's no, no trees have been taken out on this subject property. Let's see. Ms. Kozinski mentioned the fill. She talked about that before. I noted that significant testing was done. And there was, none of the materials that she talked about were found in any of the test pits. You know, as far as old, old washing machines and those kinds of things. We will be taking out the fill and putting back engineered fill underneath all of the homes and underneath the areas proposed for city streets. So even if there is something there, we'll get rid of it. So I don't think there's any problems there. Anything else I've missed? That's it, unless you have more questions of us.
Does the commission have any further questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. Does the commission have any additional questions for staff?
I guess I'm not sure. I'll look around generically. The, the post-development flow, I mean, absent something like a flow meter in the stream, I mean, how are the drainage thing? How, how will we know whether or not they're at zero or better?
Sue, is this on?
Little red light.
Little red button. Okay, now I'm on. So there are no measurements in the stream. And what is required is that they do an evaluation based on the storm flows that are normal for this area. And they're stated within the city's design standard. I think a two-year storm is what, two-point-six inches? So there's criteria that's used to do what would essentially be a paper study. And that paper study has to show that what they're proposing is going to have no additional flow going towards that drainage. With regards to how you measured that in the stream afterwards, that's really problematic for several reasons. One of them is we don't have a flow now. Another one is that every storm event is different. So how are you actually going to compare apples to apples? It's a hard, hard thing to do. So what we do is a paper study based on existing conditions, proposed conditions, and the storm events that are normal for various storm periods, two-year event, twenty-five-year event, hundred-year event.
Okay, well, six years from now, they come to us and say, there's way, you know, the, the water has, has increased coming, you know, into my property. What methodology would we use, being the city, to show either the homeowner that they're wrong or the developer that they've done something wrong and they need to mitigate? I mean, you say it's a paper study. Where are the numbers coming from that you're using the paper? You know, that you're making this paper with? I mean.
The numbers come from standard hydrologic conditions that are in the Oregon City area. So there are over, I don't know how many years that have been used to define what a two-year event is. But it's got to be, I don't, John, do you know forty, fifty years of data that?
Don't know, but that seems about right.
Yeah.
It's a lot of years.
There's a, a lot of rainfall data that tells us what these standard storm events are in this area. And that's where we get that data. That's not just pulled out of-
Right, no, and I understand that. So the data shows that we've had six normal years. So three two-year events or whatever theoretically. But they say the water has increased coming onto their property. How would we show without, absent an actual flow meter, that it is or isn't more? I mean, I, gee, the same amount of rain fell this six years as there did in the previous six years, and they say, but there's more water. How do we answer that question?
I guess I would answer it this way in that, at that point in time, there may be something going on upstream in the system that we need to evaluate. So hearing about that would be a good thing for us to check out. It may be that there's a flow control structure that's got problems associated with it that we would have to check out. The other thing is, is there's stormwater master plans which look at these drainage areas as well. Again, not from a particular project's perspective, but from a basin's perspective. And, you know, I think the problem with these storms is they, being us as citizens in general, if we've got a drainage way in our backyard, there's not much science that goes into that. We just sense that there's more water running through it for whatever reason. We don't necessarily keep in, in mind what intensity that particular storm event happened. I mean, the kind of curves that we're talking about, there's a, there's a durner curve that goes with these storm events. And some of them peak early and drop off. Other ones go for many, many days. There's all these different conditions. And the best we can do is apply the science in a standardized way. That's what the code drives us to do, is to, to look at a, a two-year storm event based on a historical durner curve that says it's going to peak now. And that's what the, the amount of flow that's going to come through that pipeline. It's a theoretical value. If we get a storm event that, for whatever reason, is, is got three days of flow, of, three days' worth of, you know, steady rain. And then we get a real downpour that, maybe it's just a two-year storm, but it's still going to feel so big because everything's saturated. So our stormwater calculations are most accurate under these typical kinds of conditions that we see here. But there's definitely rain events and weather conditions that satur, that, you know, where the ground's saturated and the pipe, pipe flow is greater. And we just, it's kind of like traffic in the sense that we've got these models that, that kind of show these things. But there's going to be conditions where those models are gonna, are, are not going to accurately reflect the amount of traffic that you get or the amount of stormwater. Stormwater is actually, I think, an easier predictor than traffic. And so, you know, we, what, what, what we're doing here again is applying the science that is traditional in the industry. That doesn't mean it's, it's right all the time. It's right most of the time. And so that's, how's that? Is that a good enough answer or?
So your answer is, sorry, you're standing in two inches of water, but you average being dry.
Hopefully, we're better than that. But, you know, I mean, and, and we, the, the other thing is we design our conveyance systems for something more than we would for, say, detention. But, yeah, I mean, the weather, the, the weather of the year is, the more likely we're going to see more, more flow in those pipelines, more erosion along stream banks, those kinds of problems.
And I can understand it. I mean, we've had a wet winter, so, you know, and I'm just using this as a generic statement. We've had a wet winter, so yes, there's probably more water in, in your, in your drainage ditch. We've had a drier winter, so there should be less water in your, in your ditch. But how do we know?
Well, you know, I would say that, that the problem that we're dealing with here is absent a historic measurement.
Right.
If, if you had a, a ten-year history of measurements to compare it to, then it would be a fairly easy thing to say, okay, after the development is done, you, you can go back to those records from the last eight or ten years and say, oh, well, it's different now. Without that, then you're only looking at anecdotal evidence, which people's perceptions can be mistaken. And I, I know a typical winter in Oregon, people will say, oh, it was a lot wetter than normal. And then you look at the statistics and you find out it's just typical. Maybe you had one week that was really, really a lot of rain, but the rest of the winter was pretty normal. So the, the measurements would be really helpful. And unfortunately, I'm sure the Strohackers don't have eight or ten years' worth of measurements on that drainage course to, to compare to. But that, that would be the ideal way to determine the certainty that there was a change. Other than that, you're just looking at anecdotal evidence.
Couldn't, couldn't agree with you more.
You know, unless they have photographs. If they had photographs over the last seven or eight years that they lived there.
Even that, I mean that.
And then they could say, well, the stream has gotten wider and wider every year. And that might be some kind of evidence. But, but absent that, we're, we're just looking at, we have to look at the statistics that are available to us when we're doing a study like this and say, what should the flow be based on these criteria?
And you know, that's, I guess, I've been going off the, what's been stated here in testimony that no more than, than what's currently going there is going to go there. But how do we know what's currently going there? How do you measure that? I agree with all of you.
If you use the same method of calculation and you say, based on this amount of area and this amount of water falling, here's how much water should flow. And then after the development, if you use the same calculations, it should tell you that either more or less should be flowing that way. So as long as you're using the same data for both calculations, you should get valid results.
Well, I heard the word problematic, you know, on paper. And I kept thinking, well, that's different than an actual measurement. So that's why I was agreeing with you.
As long as you're using the same statistics before and after, and you're not, you know, adjusting the statistics. And you say, this is the, the same event, we're going to measure it before and after in the same site. And what the developer here is proposing is, at the end of their development, the calculated amount of flow that'll go into that outlet will be no more than what it is calculated now. And that, absent previous measurements, that's all we can go with.
It's not as if the city is not making the effort to control these things. But all things being said, this is not a perfect application. No application comes before us will be perfect. We've got to consider traffic. We've got to consider water runoff. We've got to consider sidewalks, the comprehensive plan. And we're putting all these pieces of the puzzle together incrementally. And the time will come that we will be able, as John said, to widen Pease Road, make the improvements when the city can improve, can afford it, when the time has come. But we can't do it all at one, one time. We can't solve the Strohacker's problem with, at, at this time. But the time will come that, that problem will be solved.
As soon as you come up with the two-hundred-and-forty million.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. It, it just boils down to that. If we had the money, we, we, we'd be able to do it. But we're like every other city in the state of Oregon. We're, you know, we're headed towards the slope, not the cliff, but the slope.
Well, I guess it's not the city's to fix. It's if you're planning new development, is the development going to add to the problem? Then it's their responsibility.
If we don't take into consideration the, the plus on this thing, then we ought to shut every subdivision down that comes before us. Because the same problems will be testified to, traffic, water flow, this and that, one another thing. So, you know, I'd like to have the uniform or have the law applied due to formally. But it just, it's not realistic. It's not realistic.
But we can't change the past, but we are a planning commission planning for the future. So you look at things now with a new direction, saying this is the way it has been.
We're looking through the glass darkly.
So are, are we done with staff at this point? Any more questions for staff?
Actually, I have one, but, and it's going to be like, what in the world? Looking at engineering policy EP eleven-oh-one. It says it's a policy adopted in two thousand, but all the dates say two thousand-ten. So one- So one.
Just means they reprinted it in 2010.
So there were changes made? And if so?
Well, give me the number again. We'll have to get back to you on that, Damon.
Engineering Policy 00 dash 01 Guidelines for Development, effective April 10th, 2000. And every single page has uh June 15th, 2010 on it. But there's no revised 2010 or as amended 2010 or.
I think that's when we made the PDF, but let me check.
That's fine. I got no problem with that. I just, if you got dates of one and effective dates of another, it looks like it might have been altered without adoption. So.
So uh, I guess we we need to close the public portion of the hearing. So um, we're at a point of discussion.
Well, uh, I'll talk about the second big thing in the, second elephant in there. The the zoning, um, I don't like that it's R6. I think R8 would be better. But as clearly stated, it's legal. It's a lot better than that R3.5, which I don't hold against the developer, but that was a big mistake uh cons- considering all the rest of the zoning around it. R6 is adjacent to it. R6 is what detention's been designed for. I'd really rather it be R8, but that's a personal preference and I don't get to be personal up here. So um, but I know people are thinking it, so I thought I'd just say it out loud. As far as the detention, um, I know it's a mathematics exercise, but uh, I think there that with two-thirds of the runoff going a different direction, um, there should be some improvements. Part of the problem with with the Strohackers' property is it's at the bottom of the, the road slopes both ways. And it's just, I mean, I've driven by it several times because I take my cord to to zigzag across to Central Point. So um, you know, it's it's a pretty property, but it's also at the bottom of two slopes. So um, hold the developer to it, talk to planning or to Public Works, whoever's going to be watching the flow. And uh, yeah, I don't know if, yeah, take pictures. I don't know if Home Depot sells a flow meter. Maybe you just want to go spend 10 bucks and stick one in your stream too. All those are are good things. Um, I think uh, at this point, you know, they've addressed every concern. So um, as far as the uh approval criteria 28 and whether it's a type two or not, um, do you have their report uh for the two and?
Hey, uh, we just got additional information from the applicant submitted into the record.
Okay. So the, you, definitely tonight, you have their report. Whether or not um it's already in the office and some engineer in the back corner with his little graphic calculators going over it. You don't know that answer?
We're still in review and with.
Regarding timing, Commissioner, we received what Laura Turway has on Friday.
Okay, that's fine.
And then caused engage with the applicant. But again, it's this paper is mathematical uh exercise is what we're discussing right now.
Right. But but you do, it is in possession and and so I.
Why was it submitted so late?
Well, they just got the numbers. I I have no problem with it having come. But when is this, assuming approval tonight, when will this go in front of City Commission?
May 1st.
Will you have your analysis done by then?
Well, absolutely. We'll have it done by then.
Excuse me. The the record's going to be closed before the City Commission if you would decide to approve this tonight. So the material that they would produce would not go in the record.
Okay. Well, that's.
My concern was the evidence wasn't there. And what I'm hearing people say is that the evidence is now there. And I did hear the applicant's engineer talk about the projected flows.
Right.
Which resolves my concern about the lack of evidence being.
Right. And that's what I'm getting to though is that that's now in the record. So if somebody were to be concerned about that, they would be able to to address that as part of their testimony at City Commission.
If they can calculate based on the materials in the record, then that is not new evidence. And they will be able to testify in a closed record proceeding about that. Any new evidence will not be allowed to be introduced before the City Commission.
Right. They but they can also testify as to the, as to their belief or their calculated evidence that it, that the, that the information provided was inaccurate.
I think that might be a new fact.
Okay. But that would be for the City Commission to decide.
I think it would be.
Okay.
So Carrie, if it's been entered into the record, but we don't have it, how does that equate? We we don't have that information. It's in the record, but we.
You have, you have, the applicant has said that testimony has come into the record. So the applicant is satisfied that they've met their burden. And they're the ones that are risking here, right? Ultimately. They're the ones who could get challenged or whatever. So they claim that they have put it in and their engineer, who is a licensed engineer, is giving you conclusions that one would draw from that information. Your choices are to either review, to continue this hearing, to allow time for you to review that material, leave the record open, or make a decision trusting that your staff will, using that data, apply the conditions that you identified and satisfy the criteria.
The 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 burden is on the applicant to comply with the condition.
And to comply with the criteria.
Exactly. So if the if the condition of approval is that no additional flow would be allowed into that outlet, that they would have to demonstrate that to city staff.
This is pretty standard. These are preliminary plans. These are preliminary stormwater calcs. They're just demonstrating that it is feasible. When we get to the construction phase is when, you know, we work through multiple issues. So this isn't abnormal. I guess if that helps to kind of get to the concern.
Let me ask you a clarifying question then. So is it, since we're using, throwing the word around tonight of what's normal and what's not normal, information has been submitted into the record to staff. Staff has not completed their review in order to give us their best professional judgment. So how am I supposed to make a decision regarding testimony without getting a recommendation from the staff? I guess that's really what I'm feeling a little uncomfortable.
You aren't getting a recommendation from staff. You're getting a recommendation that compliance is feasible based on the evidence that they have received.
And that's what you guys said?
And you've got, and and that the condition will ensure compliance.
We have condition 28 that.
Right.
And that kind of feasibility determination happens a lot.
And and the condition puts the burden on the applicant.
So is it typical?
Taking a chance on that.
So is it typical that they don't have a recommendation, that the information gets submitted, that they're still looking at?
Lighting plans, lighting plans, for example.
No, I'm talking about this specific stormwater thing. I'm just, I'm just trying to gauge if this is normal or this is, this is not normal. I mean, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not making judgment whether it is or isn't. I'm just saying, it just, let's just say my spidey senses are tingling that I'm just a little, feeling a little uncomfortable.
Typically, what happens is a complete stormwater report gets submitted to uh, as a part of the complete application package, gets reviewed by engineering, and then they come to the hearing with staff saying that the, that the study's been adequate. And then we say, fine, we trust you. We don't know anything about stormwater. We don't, and and I don't want to even think about reviewing another stormwater or a stormwater report or even pretend like I even know what's going on in one. But I think that there needs to be some kind of basic criteria that we need to review it against. And then we also need to have all the stuff in a pile so and and review it one time.
I think it's just timing.
To have both engineering and planning saying, all this stuff is okay. We can approve this.
What you heard from staff tonight is if they don't meet the standard, it won't be approved.
Okay.
And we have a condition that reflects that.
Right.
And we've identified an alternative methods that could be used and there might be other ones out there to address it.
Okay.
And and all of the burden is upon the applicant because condition 28 says that they have to meet that standard.
Adopted standard, correct.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Yeah, you certainly can.
And that's what I was getting to is there was some talk about modifying 28. And I don't think we need to because they're on record saying that that they're agreeing to the zero standard. I'm putting quotes around that. And that they've submitted information. And if somebody's really got a problem with that, there will be an opportunity for them to bring that problem up in front of City Commission. Whether or not they're shot down, that that comes, that's the City Commission's call. But um, they'll still have the oppor- there'll still be another bite of the apple. There might be a worm in it when they bite. But there's a bite of the apple.
Correct.
So and and with that, I don't think there's a need to necessarily change.
For the type two review.
Right.
Correct. Because the information is there.
Right. And that's, that's what I was getting at.
I agree. I agree. Okay. Uh, other other comments uh in in commission discussion?
Um, okay. As I said earlier, I drove Pease Road today and maybe I ran over you with it when you were taking pictures. But uh, I, I was trying to go slow so I could see where the addresses were and where everything was, uh, where this might be. And I was going the speed limit and I was still feeling pressure to the point where I had to pull off. And I had to pull through some side ones and come back a couple times. So I'm on safety. And I keep thinking, okay, I could understand if there was a condition that the driveway for seven was off this side road, whatever it's going to be called, Pavilion. Uh, and eight was there and only nine did that. Because I heard the last time that there is going to be traffic or parking allowed on the street. So that means, I had heard that at one point. But even then, and I, with all deference to Tony, he knows his experience about the roads. I just was thinking, okay, someone going south is going to have to back out over the road going this way, back out to this to go south as opposed to north. I could, but anyway, you're going to have to back out onto a road where it is busy. And it's going to get busier with more construction and more homes out that way. And so my concern is still, um, I could, if there was a condition that seven and eight were um off the side and only nine was that way, I could see being more comfortable with it. But it's just I'm still concerned about safety because of people pulling in and out and traffic with buses and uh school buses and people walking. But didn't I hear that there was going to be traffic or cars allowed to to park on that road in front of those homes? I thought I heard that the last time.
The rec- record's closed.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
He's asking staff a question. He's asking staff.
I'm sorry. I didn't know who to ask. But I heard that last time that there was cars going to be allowed to park on that street road. It's a road, they say, so not a street. Anyway, my concern is safety and traffic on that area, backing out.
But that again comes back to enforcement being the issue more than the development. I mean, I I've, I'm on Pease.
Is there parking on Pease?
Couple times a week in various spots.
No, I mean here, in front of this.
Oh.
I heard there was that time.
Answering his question.
Uh, what we heard tonight was that the parking is on the other side of the street, not on, not in.
He's asking, will there be parking on Pease Road in front of seven, eight, and nine?
The answer to that.
I heard there was the first time we talked about this.
So if it's no, somebody say no. So Tom will get off of it.
The answer is no. The answer is no. There was an earlier discussion about the potential, but they did, they withdrew that. So.
Okay.
You know, I I understand your concern, Tom. And and we keep coming back to this issue and over and over again. It has nothing to do with the development, how fast people drive on.
No, but I'm talking about safety of having driveways that go out on Pease Road.
Driveways from those lots onto the street.
But I'll just, I'll give you a little uh personal observation because I used to live right over in that neighborhood. And uh, it's not the amount of traffic, it's the speed. Uh, there's not that much traffic on that road. It's people driving at 45 and 50 miles an hour that's the concern.
But would you be willing to grant me that with all the other new homes and all the new developments, it's going to get busier with more traffic on it?
So.
I think maybe what you're thinking of, Laura, didn't you say that you wanted the, those lots to be facing Pease? In the staff report you made, I have my notes from the last time that those lots would be facing, the front doors would be facing Pease.
Seven, eight, nine.
Carrie, can I answer that question?
It's a condition.
Yes, it is. It is a condition of proven requirement of our code to orient towards Pease. Yes.
Which condition is that?
Eleven.
Eleven?
You, you can.
But there's no root, but the condition does not require them to have driveways out onto Pease.
Right.
So, and in fact, I would think as a developer, you'd want them not on Pease because people don't like backing out onto busy roads.
That's what I'm getting at.
So, so by the, just by economics, it probably will not point that way.
Anyway, that's my concern.
Does that, does that help?
Okay. Other discussion? Are we at a point that we can entertain a motion?
This is not like the death penalty. If one or two decide, no, it's still the majority rule. It doesn't have to be all together.
That's right.
Hopefully, it's not the death penalty.
Um, I move approval of planning files ZC 1201, TP 1202, and US 1201, development of 12370 Pease Road.
You know, I'd like to add to that motion that um we have the stormwater reviewed by engineering, but not through a type two application.
It is being reviewed through engineering.
That's in the condition.
Not by type two.
But that's, that's.
Is that in the condition? Okay, good. I just, there was some discussion about that. I just want to make sure you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. A second. If I can do that.
All right. I'll take a roll. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espie?
Aye.
Commissioner Mavy?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
I will reluctantly say aye, but I agree with Damon. I think it should be R8. And the other thing that I'm reluctant about is that I did not find the overlay district in the Water Resources reports compelling. This this map just still troubles me, but I will reluctantly vote aye.
Commissioner Gaya?
You trouble me with your reluctance, so my conscience says no.
That's fine.
Chair Kidwell?
Um, I'll vote aye. Uh, I I do like uh the presentation of the the alternate zoning um R8 and uh R10. I thought the R8 would be a feasible development. But I understand the applicant's uh direction to make it an R6 and I will support that.
Okay, we're done with that.
Now we got the easy one.
And now the easy one.
You've got to go with your conscience, you know. If you don't feel the need to go through it, you don't.
You're saying you're very reluctant at that point.
The next item is PC 13 dash 028, L13 dash 01, Transportation System Plan, TSP, L13 dash O2, Associated Amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code.
Thank you very much.
Carrie, I don't need to read the.
Yeah. How about, how about in the interest of time that we take citizen comment first? And and then we need to make a decision about how much longer we want to go tonight?
I really want to deal with the stuff that we had issues with, the stuff we've.
Because I think we ought to just take citizen comment and then close the public hearing and and then just leave it closed for deliberation.
I would like to go to 1127.
I agree with that.
You let me know when we hit that time.
I like Tony's comment about.
I don't have any cards for public comment. Are those?
Let them go home.
And that's it then, Jim.
There we go. There's got to be one from Christine.
I was going to say.
Okay, so uh, first person speaking is Bob Nelson.
Thank you for your patience.
I was going to say good morning, but we're not quite there yet.
Not quite.
Um, my name is Bob Nelson. I I'm a resident of Holly Lane. I own a home here, also inside the city. Uh, I have a master's in plant and soil science. I have a specific coursework on land use planning and soils. I've attended seminars. There's a national, or international urban soil. I've attended seminars, there's an international urban soils symposium. I've taught soils for over twenty years. Let's see, I was also a former member of.
Did you say taught or taught?
Taught.
Okay.
I'm a, was a former, former member of the Oregon City Natural Resources Committee, and I've worked on the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. So I've, have a little bit of expertise here. And I did give you some information that was handed out earlier, entitled, Why Holly Lane? Yeah, and it has the map on the back.
We have it, yes.
And that map was taken out of the, the big dogme map, and it just was, should be at the same scale, and it's just the Holly Lane area coming off of, off of the large map. And I assume you all have a copy of this from the planning commission.
We don't have that, but Christine was very kind to point us to the right location and looking at it online, so.
Oh. But the map is really good to take, take a look at. Okay, so, what I want you to understand, on the, on the map you're looking at, Holly Lane is put in, in a purple colored to let you see the Holly Lane a little easier. Notice, and we're going from south to north, notice on the west side, which is the left side, there is a very large landslide that has been identified in the past that goes right over Highway 213, and then we go past the sharp corner on Holly Lane, and then there's another big landslide area on 213. These trouble me because it's easy to reactivate these older landslides, and construction is one way to do that. If we look on the right-hand side, there was an active slide in ninety-five and ninety-six, tore four houses in two because it was an easy place, scar of the land, it was an easy place to build a daylight basement. Well, it ripped those two, those were wet years. It's been dry since then. So, these are some concerns, that trying to make this into a major road for north-south access is going to end up causing more damage, and if the landslides on the west side of the road are reactivated, that takes Highway 213 out of the picture for months, maybe years. And I know that the highway department was working on that upper landslide area just a couple of years ago, trying to reinforce the bottom. So these things are not stable. We can't put that much more traffic, heavy trucks, and water catchment and infiltration basements, basins in there. Speaking of which, at the corner of 213 and Beaver Creek, the apartment complex that is currently sliding. Okay, why is it sliding? Now, I'm really concerned about the, all of the cluster of water infiltration sites, those are the yellow ones. Go from those sites to the apartment complex, it happens to be a distance of about twelve hundred feet. Not far, quarter mile. It could be possible that all of this concentration of water, which is what causes these landslides to move, are now affecting that complex. I can't prove it, but I don't think anybody here can tell me that is not what is happening. Because nobody knows where the water is going once it goes down there. Okay, so I just want you to be aware of, past city practices have not been great with landslides. I was concerned about the little circle when the, the big Crabtree Terrace water infiltration point was, was there, and I asked Nancy Crushhour about when you were going to line it with bentonite. She says, oh, no, we don't want to line it, we want to infiltrate the water. And it was this close landslide there that, that could then impact 213 that I was worried about at the time. So, I'm, I'm really, I think you need to be extremely cautious about this, and I, there are other routes that we can get away from the landslides and put in roads. If you go down Holly Lane between the active landslide and the landslide on the west, it's eight hundred and sixty feet between landslides. What kind of city can you build there? Yet the city wants to incorporate this area and move it into their, their expansion plans. One time, they were looking at the Caulfield Road Extension as a way to come, connect to the corner of Holly Lane, the big sharp corner. Okay, that would put a road right on the very top of an existing landslide. There is not a good way to run the traffic that the city would like to run through Holly There isn't. It's time that the city gets off of Holly Lane and looks for a better route. It's definite we need a north-south connector. Holly Lane isn't it. It's cheaper, but it's not it. So, I'm just going to go there and put the other stuff. Pardon me?
Is there any other route that you see?
Yes. If you look on your picture to the right, you can see the trailer park there, keep going right of that, there's a little road called Waldo Road. I'm not advocating to damage Waldo Road, but if you go just beyond Waldo, it's pastureland almost all the way. So, a road could start up at the high school area, go across here, and then across that big solid hillside, and then right, oh, in this area, come through here, cross the creek, you go up, goes by Nelson's, I haven't been on Holly or in Holcomb for so long, Nelson's Airport, is it still there as an airport?
Yes, it was.
Go across there, then turn down, and put a new road off of the hill and a new bridge across the Clackamas River. That opens up that whole lower area that happens to now be farmland for industrial development, something that they need to have, and it's five minutes off the freeway.
Bob, I, I need to ask you to conclude.
Please, okay. I guess my, my thing here is, is take Holly Lane out of the TSP information, because once it's in black and white, people feel they have to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
And then for someone completely different, we have Christine Kozinski.
I almost hate to tell you this, at this time of night, but I am here to represent the hamlet of Beaver Creek, and I need to speak for them and me. So, it'll be a little bit longer, I'll try to hurry.
Could you just summarize rather than read the whole letter?
Hard for me to do that, I'll try and skip where I can if you promise to read. When looking at the process for updating the city's TSP, it comes down to a lot of regulations, but an important part of the process was completely left out. I'm here to speak on behalf of more than sixty-five hundred people living within the hamlet of Beaver Creek, whose boundaries include the largest portion of Holly Lane. Your TSP upgrades will have the most effect upon these people, and yet they were not involved to participate in the planning process. Goal one, citizen involvement requires are to develop a citizen involvement program that ensures the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process. Oregon City rules state that when a new subdivision or revisions to the transportation plan are proposed, the city first meets with that neighborhood association for approval or disapproval. This initial meeting with the neighborhood association allows these citizens the opportunity to participate in all phases of the process from beginning to end. I wonder why then these same rules are not accorded to citizens living just outside the city limits. You have included Holly Lane in your TSP upgrade, a neighborhood that sits within the boundaries of the hamlet of Beaver Creek, however, you chose not to meet either with the hamlet or the good people of Holly Lane about your intent to include their street. I do not understand, you have one rule that applies to the citizens of your city, and yet another rule for citizens just living outside city boundaries where you plan to take over their streets and neighborhoods. The, because you have chosen to take their street, you do have a moral and ethical duty to the hamlet of Beaver Creek and the people of Holly Lane in your entire planning process. Your transportation committee has been meeting for months regarding these proposed changes, and yet all this time, you did not invite any of the more than sixty-five hundred people to be on this committee to represent their concerns. Because of this, you have not met goal one requirements. Goal seven, areas subject to natural hazards. This requires the city to protect people and property from natural hazards by adopting policies and implementing measures to reduce risk to people and property from natural hazards, including landslides. A few weeks ago, I gave each of you a copy of the preliminary geological report that was performed in the Park Place Concept Plan area. I pointed out discrepancies, including the fact that the study not only found landslides on both sides of Holly, but in areas west, south, and east of the study area. In other words, Holly is surrounded by landslides. The most striking revelation in the study is that the slides on Holly and in Park Place occur on slopes of only ten percent, ten to twenty percent, and yet Oregon City chose to write landslide rules regulating only slopes of twenty-five percent or greater, and I ask why? Isn't the city setting itself up for more liability? In nineteen ninety-six, if Holly Lane had been already densely developed, virtually hundreds of homes would have slid and been destroyed. A reminder, the buildout of 213 is what forced the landslides to reactivate, causing enormous damage. If the city proposes to widen and build out Holly, you could cause these same slides to reactivate once again, and if you do, not only will Holly slide, but it will take Highway 213 right with it. The city fails to comply with Zone Seven to protect people and property from landslides. In the city staff report, there are a number of findings stating the city complies with various policies and statewide planning goals one to thirteen. It would take me an entire day to go over these, so I will consolidate. Oregon City does not govern over Holly Lane, since most of the street is not within the city nor within the UGB. Holly Lane is not yours, therefore you cannot comply with any of the requirements listed in your city's staff report. You cannot speak for us. This also applies to parts of Thayer Road and Maple Lane. To recap, the city fails to comply with policies and statewide goals one through thirteen. The city certainly has failed to comply with the requirements of goal one. The people of the hamlet of Beaver Creek and Holly Lane were not included in your outreach, and therefore they have been denied privileges of being involved in all phases of the planning process. The city does not give these same privileges to their citizens, living within city boundaries is certainly a double standard. The city fails to comply with goal seven. Current city landslide regulations are too weak to govern over the difficult and unsafe topography of both Holly Lane and proposed Park Place. The city has failed to perform complete geological studies for all of Holly Lane and the proposed extensions to that street, placing hundreds of people in harm's way. The city fails to comply with goal one. We ask that the city meet immediately with both the Hamlet of Beaver Creek Board and members, as well as the residents of Holly Lane, to include Morton Road, Marisi Lane, Donovan Road, and Holly Crest over these proposed changes to the TSP. We ask that the city hold the hearings open for the susceptibility maps coming in May. These maps will guide the city into the depth of and the areas to be covered in a complete geological study. We ask for, that we ask for of the proposed transportation changes for Holly Lane. We ask that the city provide legal liability coverage to all homeowners in the entire Holly Lane neighborhood, where the city is proposing to widen and/or make changes to the roadway. Should actions by the city be shown to be the cause of a landslide or the reactivation of a landslide, the city will take responsibility for all monetary losses due to the fact that these property owners cannot obtain insurance for these losses due to landslides. We ask that Oregon City provide safety to the people of Holly Lane and to all the neighborhoods in which they are proposing more traffic. This means safety from heavy speeding traffic, safety from landslides, safety for our families, children, and pets. The city shall bear the responsibility for providing such safety measures to these people. In ending, I do not support the city's proposed updates and changes to the TSP in their present form. I ask that the concerns as listed above be enacted prior to final approval, and that Oregon City be in compliance with all state goals as listed in my above testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kidwell, I.
Could I ask for, if there's no other public testimony?
We, we need to respond to some of these.
Well, I know, but let's.
Because we were given a lot of time here.
I know.
To throw a lot of things out.
But is there anybody else that wants to testify?
Well, can we just have John respond to a couple of things that were just factually inaccurate?
Yeah, I, I actually don't have any other public testimony, so, go ahead, John.
So, and I'm going to ask Laura to help me, because I know she knows a little bit of the details, but the Beaver Creek hamlet was invited to our stakeholder advisory committee meetings, all of them, and I don't believe they attended any of them. We also, we also post, placed, placed posters around communities outside of Oregon City, including Beaver Creek. And, and I, you know, I know they're aware of it now, because we've heard this testimony from Christina for several weeks, and I don't know that we've had a representative, a representative other than Christina show up even to these public meetings. So, I, I just, I think it's a big disconnect there, and is there, is there specific details that you remember about the notice to the hamlet that I, I hate to put you on the point, but?
They're identified on our stakeholder team, and so we have been sending them emails throughout the processes. We do all stakeholders. They've been invited to come to these meetings. I can't recall off the top of my head if anyone has shown up from that hamlet or not. We've also included, like Central Point, Leland CPO, all the other CPOs, and we did have representatives show up from those other organizations. Our website is available to everyone in the public, all of our hearings have been open. We strive to get as much public comment as necessary, as needed, we wanted to get the word out as much as possible. It's been in Trail News, it's been, we think advertised quite a bit, and then we also, on top of our land use requirements, John sent out a separate notice to everyone on Holly Lane, response to our request from Christine Kozinski as well. We're trying not to treat anyone differently if they're in the city or out of the city, it's sort of.
Laura, did you say you mailed something to all the individuals on Holly Lane? Did you just say that?
That is correct.
But they're saying that they didn't get any mailing.
No, he's saying it.
Okay. I think. I actually, I mean, we did a, we did a OC map search of the Holly Lane area, pulled down all those addresses, and mailed a notice to the, the meeting directly after Christina raised the issue. That's the, that's the meeting that we noticed everyone on Holly Lane. We haven't noticed them on every meeting that we've had. We, we made an attempt to notice them in, for that one, for that one meeting. Are you talking after the last, some of the planning commission? After the meeting, I don't remember which one it is, because there's been so many, but it was the one that Christina brought to the, our attention that we hadn't provided them any notice, and so, and the code doesn't really require us to do that, but, you know, I felt like, well, we've got that road shown on there, we need to send those notices, so.
And everything's been posted on the website, and we did send the notice to everyone within the UGB, so portions of Holly Lane are within the UGB, so they did receive our notice. So it was only the sections that are outside the UGB that we sent a secondary notice.
And if you remember Holly Lane, some of it, both of the ends are in the UGB, and there's a.
there's a gap, and, so, yeah, I suppose, you know, there's some argument about whether that's enough, but...
Other than knocking on each person's door, I think we've, we've done what we need to do.
Any other questions about the public involvement? Let us know, we can answer for you.
I think the city's done a heck of a job with public notice. The door is always open. I don't see this, this committee shutting the door on anybody.
Well, I guess my, my observation is that since we've been having these public hearings, there's probably been more representation from Holly Lane residents than any other neighborhood-
Yes.
...within the city of Oregon City. And, and I commend the residents of Holly, Holly Lane for participating. It was noted to me by another one of the commissioners that none of Holly Lane is currently in the city of Oregon City.
That's true.
Zero. So, it's, it's one of those things where, where we're in the process of developing a transportation plan that affects an area that's outside the city, and whether we want it to or not, it will. And the fact of the matter is, I've looked on the map, and there are only three projects in, in the transportation plan that directly affect Holly Lane, and they're all listed on the unlikely-to-be-funded portion of the list, and the only way that they would ever become a reality is if the city, if those areas were to be annexed into the city. So, at this point, none of the transportation plan directly affects Holly Lane. It, it gets a residual effect from what happens inside the city, but there is no direct impact on that road.
Couple of questions. First, are we closing the public comment, or is it, we're going to staff, or, because-
Not for me.
I just wanted to make sure that the gentleman over there, his wife, he had his hand raised earlier, if he wants to say something, going, going, you know.
Is, is there anyone else that wants to make public comment before we close the public portion of the hearing?
I knew you ladies were moving too fast.
Jackie Coeau live on Holly Lane, and we did not get any notices in the mail. The reason we had so many people here two weeks ago is because I and Christine, another lady, took notices out and went from door to door to door and placed notices, and people that I talked to had no idea this was going on. The people on Donovan Lane, and people did not get mail at their addresses. I only knew about it because Christine had my email, and she emailed me and said, "I need help." And I walked up and down into all the houses and stuck notices on everybody's door. That's why we had so many people here, not because the city let us know anything was going on.
Thank you. So, we will close the public hearing portion of-
We have a five-minute presentation if you want, or do you-
Can I ask one more question?
It's still open.
Of-
We didn't get her to fill out a slip-
Yeah, sure.
And so, I wanted to make sure that that's cross-reference. I believe John, when he says they mailed it, I just wanted to make sure that person's address is on that list. I know you did. You told us at the last meeting you were gonna do it, and I know you did it.
That's-
Oh, my address is wrong.
That's good.
In half the city staff, I still got my old address.
Okay, so the, the public hearing portion, or public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. We'll take the staff presentation at this time.
Like, Peter just locked, hold on a second.
Bob, it's past eleven twenty-seven.
I know, I was-
All right, while we're working on that, um-
Is that a legal issue, Chuck?
All right, so as we know, the transportation system plan looks at how we get around Oregon City and how we want to spend whatever money that we think may come in for transportation improvements in the future, sort of like a budget, where we're gonna put our projects. As you know, we've gone through a process over the past year and a half to-
Is your microphone on?
Yes, sorry. We've gone through a extensive public involvement process over the past year and a half to identify problems with our transportation system or ways that we could fix our transportation system between now and the year 2035. We came up with a long list of projects, but we don't have the money to fund all of those projects, and so we came up with a criteria to figure out which projects to, are more likely to be funded. We showed you a staff report with a variety of approval criteria, and then we just have a short list of all the major items that we addressed through this process. The first one is speed. We can address speed through a variety of tools, one of them being street design, also enforcement of roadways or through the police department. We will add a statement to our transportation system plan talking about speed, so that will be in the newer version of the TSP that comes out. The next one is transit. We have heard concerns regarding a lack of access to transit in Oregon City or too infrequent of bus service. We've worked extensively with TriMet over this time period. Information's posted on the website. Essentially, when we get more homes and more density and more people in development, more transit is likely to follow. We do have a map of a regional center that we've been using. We put it in our packet. It's contained here. If you wanted to forward a recommendation to the city commission to have them actually adopt that map, you can do so. For now, it's just an addendum to the TSP or an exhibit in the TSP. Holly Lane, do you wanna, you want? Holly Lane, so we have worked extensively with the county to coordinate development along Holly Lane. Improvements along Holly Lane are identified in the regional transportation plan, our TSP, and county TSP. None of the projects are funded or likely to be funded. We are looking at the transportation system as a whole, and maybe if we make better improvements for our transportation system in the city, then maybe less people will drive on Holly Lane. We have a geologic hazards code, which we do apply when we do any development within that district, which would include any street improvements or anything like that, whether it's some of the city or developers.
Just, I want to add on to that, I think, want to reemphasize that the geologic hazard code is for when development happens, and until that time, these lines are lines on a map, and so, you know, the TSP might have a street connection from point A to B on a map, but it's not really until the development application, the development moves forward that we can really get into the details of the exact location, the best road layout, and all that kind of detailed information. That happens at the time of development, and you have to think of it, once again, that twenty, thirty, fifty thousand-foot view at the TSP was, we are listing future projects, we're not designing the project. So, the, a lot of the concerns related to geological hazards will play out during the review of the project. The project may be redesigned based on what's found out on the, based on geologic hazard reviews. It may move forward as kind of initially conceived, but that level of review can't happen until there's actually a development project or capital improvement project at the time. So, we believe that our geologic hazards code, which was updated in two thousand nine, which we think is a lot more robust than it was in previous versions, and I know staff feels that we have adequately improved our geologic hazards code to look at, at this type of street development, if and when it comes, especially in the Holly Lane area.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question real quick for John? John, let's say that Holly Lane continues to be an issue. I don't see it going away, but it never gets annexed into the city. In the meantime, is the county a slick with the switch, or are they, have they got their oar in the water, and they're going to have to ultimately address spending money on that facility, because we don't have any jurisdiction over it? We're not gonna spend money on a piece of, on a transportation system that's outside the city? So, what's, what's the policy there?
The county shows a project there as well in their transportation system plan. It's not the same cross-section, but they're, they're showing a project along there that would include pedestrian and bike, shoulder, I think is mainly more shoulder space, paved shoulder space along that roadway. So, the county's been talking to Holly Lane folks as well about like a grade-separated walking or multi-purpose path, which, you know, there's just so many options for how that could develop out there, and I think the county's open to that, much more, with much more thought and rigor than, than we are. We're just trying to meet our planning requirements for, you know, the 2035 transportation system plan, which includes, yes, a, a project and, and a line that shows Holly Lane.
And Bob, it goes even beyond that, because Holly Lane continues on up into Park Place. That's the extension up that way, and that's not in the city either. And I know when we brought it up with a work session combined with it, with the mayor, mayor even said he was concerned about the canyons and that same thing. He's got the same concern, so it seems like everything else in this whole plan is great. It's just Holly Lane and that extension going up, that's the road that's got everyone in a dither, and-
What concerns me is jurisdiction.
It's county's jurisdiction.
If it's county's jurisdiction, we should take a lot of flak for a-
Yeah.
So, you know, I think this definitely goes on to the next slide, which is areas outside the city, and these include the three concept plan areas, and what we are, how we are implementing the concept plan areas through the transportation system plan is we're identifying future projects when and if annexation occurs. These plans have been adopted, at least two of the plans have been adopted. South End Concept Plan, we put some preliminary projects, but we know they'll come back and do a further refinement of the TSP when their project comes in. Once again, these are projects on a list, so any change in taking out a particular project at this level is basically saying you are amending some of the recommendations of these concept plans. So, at the, it's really the, having the project on the list of a funded or unfunded project, and then getting to the development levels when you get to that fine detail.
Just as a, a point of information, part of the problem with areas that have geologic issues is that you cannot review them on a piece-by-piece basis. They kind of really have to be looked at as a whole, because that's why we have the problems with Newell Creek Canyon. And I think that the fatal flaw in this is, what you just said, is that the level of review is triggered by development. It's too late at that point, I think. I think that if we have an area that has problems, that we need to figure out a way to get grants or something or other, some assistance to study the bigger picture. That's why we're having issues with the subdivisions, because we've got water coming from up here that's going down here, but we're only looking at it like this, and like this, and like this. We're not looking at the whole thing as a whole, and there's a, there's inherently a problem with that, particularly, you know, not isolating this to Holly Lane. We have lots of areas in our community that have geologic hazards, and I just am loathe to wanting to look at them on a piecemeal basis, it just doesn't work. It's gotta be looked at in the bigger context.
And Denise, I do agree with you. I think, I think because we are an annexation, voter annexation-driven project, we, you know, doing a large, if some, let's say, grant money came out of the sky, which, you know, happens all the time, right? So, let's say, pretend we had grant money that came out of the sky, and we went, great, we're gonna study this area and look at preliminary levels. We don't know when that annexation's gonna actually happen.
If ever.
So, it's hard to pay, plan money on pre-planning when we can't control-
I think it's a city and county thing.
-when, when the annexation's gonna happen, and knowing that if we do work now, it may be fifteen more years before it happens.
It needs to be a cooperative city-county joint effort, because you, you don't know if a section-
We don't, we know what we don't know.
-will ever be annexed. You know, just because it's inside the, the growth boundary doesn't assure that it will be annexed.
And so, that level of, of review is, is hard at, at this kind of higher stage, and what, what, what are you really gonna get out of if you don't get down to the fine details of where the road's actually gonna be?
We have, we have a, as we talked about, we would have the normal baseline, so we'd know where we are, and I think that at our last meeting, that I had specifically requested that somebody from the county who's working on their TSP come on down, and I don't know if it's too late.
Well, you were, you were not at the city council joint work session, and that was discussed.
Did he come there?
No. We talked about that issue, and the mayor and a couple of the other commissioners were very on board with that idea, and ironically, they were going from the work session to meet with the county-
Uh-huh.
You know, it was the state or the county addresses, is where they were.
Well, we've, we've invited the county to a planning commission meeting.
It'll be here in a few weeks.
So, so, I think-
Won't it be too late?
I think everybody's on board with the idea that it will be this.
For this process.
It'll be before the city commission hears it.
It'll be before the city commission, but after we've already closed the public hearing and so forth.
Correct. But it shouldn't affect our current TSP.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, I'm not sure where the effect is there. I mean, I think your message to them is that you think it's more their responsibility than ours for Holly Lane and some of these other sources.
It's part of it, some, I'm always open to getting the most information I can before I have to make a decision, and I was hoping that I would have some information from them to help me make, better make a decision.
But, you know, I, I think, just to throw out the, the other side of the coin, is that regardless of whether the county has a plan or not, we, we have to have a plan, and our plan has to be based on the best information that we have available, absent county involvement, and they may or may not add to what we have available to us.
So, it's my baseline again, yeah.
I mean, we can't wait for them. We have to move forward with our plan. If they don't step forward, they're just gonna have to have a plan.
And our requirements for Holly-
The request was made, and they're not here.
They are on the technical advisory committee for the city's TSP.
They're still not here.
I think it comes down to, further study of existing projects can be done after development, I mean, a TSP approval, but we don't have enough information to take a project out based on the level of information, and then we have an adopted concept plan, so I think what-
Right, it's easier to-
It's easier to cap the project in and refine it at a later date than to, to take some, take a project out with, with inadequate information. So, that's what we're recommending, is keep all the projects and keep the existing recommended approval of the concept plans that went through a planning city commission process, and continue to further refine as grants or development or pressures for development or annexation moves forward.
Well, I agree with Commissioner McGriff. We're just really shooting in the dark without this information on these slight areas, both for traffic and issuance of building permits. We really are. You say that information's coming down the pike.
No, that, what I'm saying is, that information is not coming down the pike. What, what we'd need is a, is a project and a development, to do a geotechnical analysis of that area and to do a corridor plan for that area at a level that's higher than a development application, but more refined than a line on the map, and the inherent problem with that is we don't have, A, funding for that, and B, the complexities of being a voter-initiated annexation process, which is very piecemealed. When and at what point in the process does that happen? And that's, that is where you keep these projects in, you can further refine when that makes more sense.
It's kind of like a capital improvement plan. If it's not on the plan, we're not gonna spend a dime on it, and that means going into looking at areas that are on your TSP and to, it's, you know, it's just, it's not economically, financially feasible to go out and do a site-specific geologic hazards review of every potential road that's in your transportation system plan, and we just, we need to, you know, if we need to prioritize those as a community, and they're willing to spend the money to, to front it with an unknown development date, that's, that's great. That'd be wonderful.
But if it's in the plan, then it's more likely that a joint city-county study would happen if it was in, in the plan versus if it was not, the city would-
Well, and even, even in, you know, as you've heard tonight, it's obviously not a priority, it's, it's not funded in either the city or the county plan.
This is Holly Lane, you're talking.
I mean, what Christine just said a little bit ago, I had proposed at the last planning commission and also- commission and also at the joint session of just adding a 48B if it was possible. I proposed something that said, just what you said, a geologic study of that area would make, even if it, there's no money for it, there's no money for the road now anyway, but at least that may make people feel more comfortable that it was in the plan, that they knew that even though the road's there and it's not being taken out because it's part of a concept plan, if a 48B was inserted there saying, we'll do a complete geologic, before we do anything, we'll do a complete geological study, and the words that you used, it might make it more possible for people to say, okay, then we can see that for the future approved. You know what I'm saying? I'm.
And I just don't see any reason for it. I mean, our current rules say, if you're going to build, you got to do a geologic survey.
Build a road?
A road, a building, a swimming pool, airport, it doesn't matter. If you're going to build, you got to do a geologic survey.
It's too late.
So, no, it isn't.
It is.
No.
So, let's just agree to disagree. I think it's too late.
I don't think there's a problem with identifying at the 30,000-foot level, there's geologic issues out in that area, and that there needs to be some kind of structured incremental study that is done as projects come in through there. And I don't think that you would be out of compliance with the Goal VII requirements if you did that.
I think it would appease people to have that on the plan.
But have a full-blown geologic study on every square inch of Holly, as Tony said, is on Holly Lane or any of the other roads that probably do have slight areas around them as well and are functioning roadways in Oregon City and other jurisdictions as well, I just don't think it makes sense to have. I don't think cities can. I don't think it's possible for somebody, for Oregon City to have a geologic study on every single roadway or Holly Lane.
Well, and I think frankly, right now, there would be no reason for the city to conduct that study because it's not in the city. It wouldn't make any sense for the city to do a study on the county road.
But it's on the plan already. I'm saying add it to, as a subpart of that part that's on there right now. Holly Lane and that extension is on our plan, so why not just add that?
Then we need to add everything on South End Road and.
That's not a geological area, is it?
Yes, they are. They're all slight areas.
Yes.
So, every place there's a slight area, we need to put a B saying, we're going to do a geologic study, when it's the law that we'll do a geologic study.
It's already in the code that they have to do it, anyway.
So, anyway.
Holly Lane's yelled the loudest, but it doesn't mean it's not true anyplace else in the city.
Can I make one small clarification? I am not talking about doing an assessment for a road or development. I'm talking about an overall assessment of just what's going on there.
Okay.
So, we can, we can move on.
And that's really outside of the.
I'm just putting it on the record.
I'm just saying that's outside of the scope of the TSP.
I'm not asking for rebuttal. I'm just saying, if we know we have problem areas.
All right. Maybe, you know, I'm not sure where we're at here. If it's worth calling it a night at this point, it seems like we're kind of spinning our wheels here a little bit.
Well, I can, I can give you where I think we are. We have, we talked about this parking thing. That's one of my hot buttons. I think that generally what we have in the TSP, everything that I've read, is generally good. I, if we want to talk about leaving a road out because we don't have a plan for it yet, I think this, taking Butel Road or any other road in that area of South End and taking it over the bluff, that should not even be in the plan. We haven't finished the concept plan. I just think that's completely unacceptable. I have problems with Holly Lane. We say that it's part of the concept plan for.
Park Place.
Park Place. I think it's problematic as well. The two things that I would recommend is that, we're saying here that a statement would be added, that the city should pursue the full implementation of a parking management plan. I cannot support reductions in parking unless we have a parking management plan, because it's like the chicken and the egg. You're going to have a problem with it. I would, you know, I can support most everything else that we are proposing in the TSP because it's going to be studied, but I don't support that. I like the Rick Williams study, but unless we do the right thing, what good is it going to do? So, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm asking my fellow commissioners to not support that because we can't, it's got to be both pieces of the puzzle. It can't just be one piece where we're going to implement parking, and then that's it.
Better, parking, Holly Lane, Butel Road.
Well, I'm not even talking about a specific, specific road, but there are proposals showing roads that could possibly be looked at going over Kanema Bluff.
I think that's in the TSP.
Not in our TSP either. That's just Paul talking about what we should do.
Well, I don't want to do it.
Can we take a timeout real quick?
I don't want to do that.
Just for processing. So, it goes.
I think we can make a motion tonight.
This goes to the city commission on the 15th. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Our next meeting is May 13th.
I want to keep going. I want to get this done.
I don't want to.
Well, I guess two questions. One, we've heard Holly Lane, parking, sorry, I'm trying to shut down here a little bit.
Holly Lane, parking.
Roads over the.
Which I don't think is an issue.
Okay.
Because that's, I don't think, it's not an issue right now.
I just wanted to be clear that we're not supporting that, and we've had testimony that we should do it. I don't think we should do it.
Denise, let's, let's stay on track. I mean, seriously, let's not talk about rumor that we've heard from testimony. Let's talk about what's in the plan, and that's not in the plan.
I think we have a couple options. We could bring this back on the 13th, and then we could also schedule it for the 15th at the city commission and not touch the issues that you have here tonight, because there's a lot of other stuff we can bring forward to them and get their process started. Or we can try and power through here if you think you can get to some agreement. I'm not sure how you're going to, you know, if you want to take votes on the parking, you know, how you want to address that, you know, with Commissioner McGriff's concerns, and I'm not sure what the proposal is on Holly Lane.
How about we just take a little informal poll of where we are right at this minute? Are we close to a point where we can take a motion for approval of the plan, perhaps with some conditions?
I say yes.
Tom, where are you at?
Let's start at that end. Let me think here about it. Bob?
I think I'd go with Tony's. I don't think we're going to make a motion tonight that's going to make sense to the, to the commission. I'm not comfortable with it.
Paul?
Well, I think we've still got a little bit more discussion about parking, no? Or is everybody still, does everybody gel on the parking issue?
That's probably an area that I'm uncomfortable with.
Okay, and then are we up or down on Holly Lane? Do we want it in? Do we want it out? Or are we able to leave it in and have some sort of, you know, modified look at the geological issues and have some language that speaks to that in the future for study? I mean, do we have, is there going to be a lot of conversation about that? I suspect if there is, then I think we ought to, I think we ought to close public hearing and deliberate about those things when we're a little clearer, a little less tired, and are able to.
I would support what you said about putting some caveat about Holly Lane so that the city commission is aware, but I think everything else is good.
A caveat, a caveat, like geologic hazards, or are you talking pulling it out?
Talk about what Paul said. Leave it in.
No, I think we leave it in.
But say that there are obviously substantial issues involving not the, the area, the road. It's a, it's not the road, it's the, it's the condition that's under the road that's the problem.
And jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Cooperation between the county and the city.
Can we clarify?
I think that we probably could make a call to modify the UGMA to work with the county on that issue or this plan in general. I don't know, but.
Are you talking, are you talking Holly Lane going north of Redland?
Up to Holcomb. That's what I want to try to clarify.
So, that doesn't exist, and the county's not going to build it.
Right.
And we aren't either, so.
And we have the Holly Lane south of Redland, which is under county jurisdiction, will remain under county jurisdiction for the foreseeable future.
And I don't think we'd want to annex it until the county did do something with it, or at least started, or at least helped us, or did something.
I would agree.
So, when we're talking Holly Lane, we're talking north and south. Is that right?
Right, it's.
Well, we're not going to build it tomorrow. It sounds like it's, one of those things is way.
I just want to clarify, they were talking about the north extension to Holcomb.
None of the Holly Lane plans or extensions are likely to be funded.
Yeah. I know that, but they're in the plan. I know that.
I'm just saying that unless somebody with, you know, a lot of money came into the picture, that's, that's not going to happen.
Well, what could we condense down to a sentence regarding Holly Lane to leave it in, saying something to the effect that it's, that it is highly unlikely that Holly Lane will be constructed?
You know, I.
But adding your comment about the city-county interface.
I'd be uncomfortable to just single out Holly Lane. I think Damon's point is that it applies to any of the high-hazard geological areas that prior to development or improvements to those roads, that there is required to be a geological study.
Okay, let's put that in. Be, make it generic, exactly what you just said.
Because if we just apply it to one road, it's like, well, what about the one over there?
Well, it's, it applies to all of them.
Yeah.
Okay, I like exactly what you just said.
And, and I also support Denise, what you're saying. I can agree with the parking standard reductions for downtown and the McLaughlin neighborhood if they're done in conjunction, parking management plan. If they're not done in conjunction with each other, then I think it's doomed to failure.
There's one other factor we're keeping out of the conversation.
Didn't we have a number that we came up with that was, were we satisfied with the 35%?
The McLaughlin neighborhood wasn't.
I apologize, this, what PowerPoint's not cooperating. So, one thing that I was looking from this evening is general direction from the planning commission on retaining the recommended 35% reduction or potentially going to the lower reduction of 25%, as was indicated in that graph that was entered into the record a couple hearings ago. So, that kind of first part, and what I, the parking management plan, I wanted to make one correction. The, we do have a, the parking study implementation sections of the 2009 study. So, we have a parking management plan for downtown that can, that can be continued up to McLaughlin. What I am recommending as part of the planning commission's motion for approval is exactly that, is support proactive parking management options and full, full implementation of the 2009 parking management, parking study done by Rick Williams. And I think that, knowing that, that it's the city commission that, you know, that is going to be looking at budget and funding levels, and the TSP and the code amendments are more land use-based, I think that your best option is to be as robust as you can in your recommendation, and specifically tell them what you would like. And that is some things you can do, but you can build that into your recommendation when you do your motion.
Well, in that case, I guess I would, I would support that, except that I would recommend to my fellow planning commissioners that the parking reduction, not the 25%, not, or the 35%, not be implemented in McLaughlin until the parking management plan is funded and approved, because what will happen, it gets implemented downtown, they're all up in McLaughlin, and it's like I testified, it's already there, and you can't, you can't do it. It cannot be done. I don't want to go on trust and faith.
Mr. Chairman, one hundred thought. In the next three to five years, the city is going to be faced with the concept plan of a Blue Heron, and we don't know what kind of parking requirement's going to be involved down there. At the risk of jumping the gun, the collateral spill-off, I guess, two words, the collateral damage, if you will, from Blue Heron is going to come right up Main Street, right downtown, and it's, the parking spillover is, is going to be tremendous, because you're going to have a lot of people visit that site.
You know, that, that's such an unknown factor. I don't think we can even really go down that road.
But I think to, to address Denise's concern, because you can't scope out specifically what is your definition of full implementation, I guess that's kind of the, kind of the ultimating, ultimatum aspect of the, these code amendments. Until, unless you scope exactly what you want, it's a moving target of when is that fulfillment met? So, I mean, my recommendation, rather than going to an ultimatum, is clearly spelling out what you recommend as being concurrent, but if you do it in an ultimatum set, how do you prove that, that the city commission has met that at the end of the day?
When it's, when they fund it, and then.
But what is fund, I mean, what is full fund? I mean, that's, there's a point where, when, when is that met? And knowing that it could be years to full funding, so how do you work with incremental funding, I guess?
Which is why I just don't support any reduction from the McLaughlin area, because we need to see what happens with downtown and then phase it into McLaughlin, not hit them both. I haven't heard a justification for a reduction in the McLaughlin area that justifies the potential impact to the residents at this point. You know, I got no problem with us figuring out what's going on downtown. If there's, I was part of the parking study, and there is an overabundance of parking theoretically, I mean, everybody's got to do their part to make that true. So, a reduction downtown has time for the city to figure out how they're going to manage it, how they're going to deal with just that spillover, and then they can look at, you know, implementing it in the McLaughlin corridor, and, you know, who knows, maybe Abernathy Road corridor by then, you know, as things develop. You know, because just at 50%, there's going to be an impact in McLaughlin. Now, does that impact the 35% reduction in McLaughlin, or is that the 50% spillover? So, I think it needs to, at the very least, be phased, and, you know, we're looking at five or six years between plans, so go with 50% downtown, nothing in McLaughlin. It's still within your purview to, to do some adjustments, and they can all apply for, for modification.
We have, so we don't have that many vacant parcels in McLaughlin to be doing huge development.
So, that's my recommendation of it, is just go with downtown, get it, get the system up and running, then look at spreading it out.
Could we get, ask for consensus of the commission on that particular item?
I, I think I would support Damon's direction.
What about you?
I agree.
Okay. We got consensus on that.
That's, I just want to let you know, going down to zero may be a little problem. I mean, no, no reduction may be a little problematic, because we already have a 15% reduction in Hilltop for transit-oriented development, 15, 15%. That's when you have mixed uses in a walking area, so at a minimum, I think matching the transit-oriented development in the Hilltop area would be, would make sense at a minimum to have the 15% across-the-board reduction, which is allowed up, 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 in, you know, Malala Avenue, Warner Millie, when you meet the requirements as part of the transportation-oriented development, when you have a certain level of multifamily within a quarter mile of a certain number of square footage of retail, which was usually met along the whole Seventh Street corridor in McLaughlin. Would, if you, if you took each individual development and did the math, almost every development would meet the transit-oriented development definition that we have up on top of the hill, and that's 15%.
Well, I don't know how you call, how do we call it transit-oriented, but we don't have a bus line on Seventh. It's on 12th and Fifth further over.
Well, I, I think we have consensus.
I agree.
I think we, we're all in agreement. We would support the 50% downtown and defer the 35% of McLaughlin district at this time.
And we can come back and revisit it. I, I agree. I think it needs to be revisited, but it's not, time is not appropriate right now.
So, even the 15%, which is what would be allowed if you had a project up on Warner Millie than that.
It's not Warner Millie.
It's a different neighborhood.
And it's a different residential situation.
Yeah, it's an entirely different neighborhood.
We have like Close End, you've got the commercial zone, and then boom, you've got houses right there.
Okay, so we've got consensus on that, and I think, I think we're in agreement.
So we've got consensus on that. And I think, I think we're in agreement if we attach language that just requires a geologic hazard study to any road that is developed in a hazardous zone prior to development.
All right. I could support that.
That that project can't proceed until they've done a full geological study of that road.
Well, and it has to be more than just that little, because geological hazards don't go just by roads. They are a little bigger. I would support that as well.
Yeah, so let's have a motion.
I would move that, subject to the two recommendations by the planning commission, that all the other parts of the TSP be recommended to the city commission.
Second.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Mavy?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Gass?
I can agree with 95% to 96% of it. I'm really uncomfortable with this at this point, but I've been taking notes all night. I can see approving this right now, but my conscience always tells me that, I've been fighting that for 10 years, that whole area out there. So that's my qualifier. I disagree with that, but I vote for yes for approving the TSP.
We're recommending.
Yeah, we're recommending it. Even though I've got those, I wanted to say, even though I've got that in my conscience, I say go ahead with it, but I've still got those problems.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Wow. Congratulations, ma'am.
Well, we will look forward to seeing it again.
We'll work on my.
Are we adjourned?
Oh.
I think Tony has some updates for us here on everything, the universe and.
We're adjourned.